Yes, Budget Workshop Meeting to order. It's 5:32 today is June 29th of 2023. Ms. Trevino, please call the roll.
Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mayor Hewson.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Mr. Mendozzo.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
All right, and first, we will have our citizen comment time period. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, ma'am.
Then I won't read the rules.
Okay.
Okay. In that case, if you will read our one and only item, Ms. Trevino.
Yes, receive a staff presentation, hold discussion regarding the fiscal year 2022-2023 financial update and preliminary fiscal year 2023-2024 budget and provide direction to the city manager.
And speaking to the city manager, Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we're providing an update on the budget process and a timeline of next steps. This process began with city council and directors coming together at your visioning session in January to discuss your strategic goals, continued with the budget policy workshop in February, approval of strategic plan and budget policy in March, and a budget work session in May. Over the past few months, our team has met and collaborated to critically examine our needs, communicate the challenges that all departments are faced with, and work in coordination with one another to identify priority projects and positions. We recognize that the same cost drivers and inflation affecting city operations are also affecting our residents, so once again, we use a zero-based budget approach. Our thoughtful deliberation throughout this year's budget process has allowed us to identify ways to develop a budget that reflects a holistic operational approach and incrementally moves us to a better place. That being said, building a budget is a dynamic process and involves many moving pieces. So far, we have received preliminary tax rolls and are expecting final numbers near the end of July. In an effort to increase community engagement, we are also planning on presenting the budget to the Neighborhood Commission in August, as well as working on videos describing the budget process. There are still some significant unknowns as we work toward drafting a budget. One of the most significant considerations is awaiting the results of the legislative session and seeing what is approved related to property tax relief. Another consideration is exploring additional federal funding opportunities based off the discussions and guidance we received on our recent trip to Washington, DC. The strategic plan has been our guiding principle as we prepared this budget. The goals that you discussed with the director's team in January and improved in March include quality of life and sense of place, economic vitality, public safety, core services, and fiscal excellence, mobility and connectivity, and environmental protection. We will further discuss the strategic plan and how every employee in our organization is included in it as we roll out the classification and compensation study. Our employees are the greatest asset, and I am committed to requesting the necessary resources to invest in our workforce and ensure we have an organization of excellence. You will see in the presentation that our employee vacancy rate has stabilized, but it still remains high. We have made the class and comp study a priority to deliberately look at our job titles, positions, and overall compensation philosophy. During the budget policy, you authorize that we could set aside 5% of our personnel costs in a pool to go toward the implementation of the study. Tonight, I will be requesting an additional 2% to address recommended changes. I'm recommending this additional amount to acknowledge the high cost of turnover and need to fill vacancies, coupled with the cost of recruitment, onboarding, and the resulting impact on operations and services. We believe the 7% of personnel costs will allow us to take the first step to make the marked changes identified through the classification and compensation study, ensuring we are retaining and recruiting a talented workforce. It is important to note, we do not currently anticipate that this increase will be awarded to employees as an across-the-board increase as we did last year. Rather, the funds will be set aside to implement the results of the study, which will be completed in August. In addition to the completion of this study, this presentation outlines the progress council has made in addressing public safety staffing. We are not there yet, and we want to provide our plan to continue this effort in future fiscal years. We have a lot of information to step through tonight, and our Director of Finance, John Locke, is here to provide an overview of our general fund and other major operating funds. We have a number of decision points that we're seeking council direction on this evening prior to us finalizing the proposed budget, which will be submitted to council in August. Before I turn it over to John, I'd like to use this moment as an opportunity to personally thank Finance Assistant Director Ismael Garcia, of course, Finance Director and CFO, John Locke, Financial and Budget Analyst Bridgette Clack, our City Manager's Office team, and all of the directors and assistant directors for their collaboration and time spent on preparing the information you're receiving tonight. Thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration. Mr. Locke.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes, and thank you, City Council and Mayor. The first thing that we'll begin with is just looking at our budget timeline and look at where we're at in that timeline. As you can see, we're at our second of four scheduled budget workshops. The next big thing that will occur is by July 25th, we'll receive our certified roll. And our second largest revenue source in the general fund, our property taxes, will be more locked in than what they are right now. Right now, we're operating on preliminary numbers. August 15th is the date that we will submit the proposed budget to city council. On that same day, city council will set the maximum proposed tax rate, and that's the day that we'll have the third budget workshop. As Ms. Reyes pointed out, on August 16th, we'll be having a budget presentation at the Neighborhood Commission. That'll be the first time that the budget's been presented to the Neighborhood Commission, and next year, we're looking at having that a little earlier to be able to get a lot more time for some feedback before the budget's submitted to city council. And finally, on September 5th and 19th, there'll be a public hearing on both the budget and the tax rate. September 19th would be the date that city council would consider adopting the budget and setting the tax rate. So as we begin with the fund overview, we'll start with our largest operating fund, and that's the general fund. This slide provides the actual activity in the general fund in fiscal year '22, what is currently budgeted in fiscal year '23, what we're estimating to finish on both revenues expenses for fiscal year '23, and right now, what the preliminary numbers are looking like for fiscal year '24. As we look at these fiscal year '24 numbers, it's important to remember that these are preliminary numbers. As the date draws nearer and we gather more information, both the revenues and expense budgets will continue to be refined, and so this will be close to what city council sees, and it won't be exactly what city council sees when we propose the budget in August. Just looking, though, at the fiscal year '23 estimate and comparing it to the budget, you can see that we're estimated to bring in more revenues than what was budgeted, and we're estimating to spend about $3 million less than what is budgeted for fiscal year '23. So we began the year with a $41.9 million fund balance, and we plan to use about $13 million of that on one-time expenses. We're not going to use quite as much of the fund balance, as you can see, and so we're actually going to add to fund balance and finish at $35 million is what we're estimating right now for fiscal year '23. 25% is $23.7 million, and so the amount in excess of that will be used for one-time expenses. Included in that number is the fiscal year '22 fund balance in excess of 25%, which was $5 million, and there's a slide that is proposing how to use that $5 million in the fiscal year '23 budget and '24. So looking at the fiscal year '24 preliminary budget, revenues are budgeted to be at $108.4 million and expenses at $110.7 million. There are about $1.5 million of one-time expenses, so right now, the budget is about $700,000 out of balance. That certainly isn't the way that it'll be submitted to city council, and as I said, as we continue to refine the numbers, we'll bring back a balanced budget. Beginning to look at the largest revenue source in the general fund, that's our sales tax. We started with this May 16th slide. That was when we had the first budget workshop, and at that time, this slide provided that where we were estimating to finish fiscal year '23, which was $40.8 million, and then what we were projecting for fiscal year '24, which at the time was $42.9 million. Wanted to provide that slide because there has been a change. As we've received more sales tax information and more sales tax receipts, we're revising that outlook, and you can see that the amount for fiscal year '23 is adjusted down to $40.5 million, and the proposed budget for '24 is adjusted down to $42.2. And the next couple of slides will help explain the reasoning behind why we're recommending to do this. This slide shows the total sales tax from 2018 to what we're estimating for 2024, and it also shows the percent change year over year. So you can see the last three or four years, we've seen a lot of growth in our sales tax from 11.5% in '21 up to 15% in '22. We're estimating that we're going to finish fiscal year '23 at about a 9% growth year over year, and right now, what we're estimating for fiscal year '24 is a 5% growth in our base sales tax, in that our outlet sales tax will remain flat, and this next slide will help explain why we're estimating that. This slide has a lot going on, so I'll explain what is going on on the slide. This is showing the rolling 12-month percent change for our base sales tax, our base sales taxes in blue. Gray represents the outlets, and the green is the combined amount. So it goes back pre-COVID, and as you follow the line, you can see that our base sales tax, the blue, was increasing pre-COVID, and the outlet sales tax was declining, so pre-COVID. Then you can obviously see where COVID hit and we bottomed out, our outlet sales tax was at negative 33%, and our base sales tax just barely went negative at .1%. Combined, though, that was about 11% year-over-year decrease. Post-COVID, we peaked at around 33%, and since then, we've been declining. Our base sales tax is still growing, so you can see as of March, we're still growing over 13% year-over-year growth, so we're still seeing growth. It's just starting to slow down now, which is common, you know, as the sales tax number gets higher, it's harder to increase that number at the same high percent. Something to look at, though, is our outlet sales tax. For the past five months, our outlet sales tax has actually been negative year-over-year. And if you look at the, in the March, it looks like it's starting to stabilize somewhat, and that's why we think that it's safe to estimate that the outlet sales tax will be flat next year, and we don't want to estimate an increase over that. So then, the next couple of slides just talk about the major categories of revenue in the general fund. This first, we've already covered sales tax. It makes up 39% of the current FY '24 general fund revenues. As I mentioned, we're estimating an overall increase of 4%, which is a 5% on the base and a 0% on the outlets. Our property tax will make up 33% of total revenue. We're using the preliminary values as provided by the chief appraisers, and the budget is based on standout or current tax rate, the 60.3 cents, and we're estimating the no-new revenue and a voter approval number, and that will be between those two as the budget policy said that it needed to be. The next largest revenue source is franchise fees. It makes up 11% of the total revenues. We are estimating growth from both revenue and population growth. There's two sources of revenue that we receive from franchise fee revenue. One is from outside utilities, like outside electric, gas, cable companies. They pay a franchise fee to the city for the use of our right-of-ways and the wear and tear on our streets. And also internally, the utilities, electric and water, wastewater, pay a franchise fee to the city, and that's based on a percent of the amount of operating revenue that those funds bring in. The next largest are transfers, and this makes up 7% of our revenue, and these transfers are based on a cost allocation plan that is prepared, and it's for all the shared costs of the city. When you have costs such as legal, communications, human resources, the city manager's office that provides services to all the funds, this cost allocation plan determines how much of that cost should be assigned to the different funds, and transfers are made into the general fund to cover the cost of all the other funds proportionate share. Our license and permits make up 5% of total revenue. We're still evaluating the impact of the development services cost recovery study. That became, those rate adjustments became effective in March, and there hasn't been enough activity to get a good feel on how that's going to impact. That might be one of the revenue sources that is refined by the time that this budget is presented to city council and we have more information to go by. All the other revenue sources make up 5%, the largest of which is the interest income, and there's a bullet there just to bring the attention that that, from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24, the budget has increased from $150,000 to $1.5 million. So we've seen a big increase, and we've talked about the reason for the increase in that interest revenue in past city council meetings.
Mayor, I imagine with these assumptions, you know, we're closely monitoring what's going on with the legislative session and our state leaders. You know, property tax represents a third of our revenue, and I see on the next slide we're talking about public safety increases nearly through $1 million, that I hope our state leaders recognize that, you know, this is how our local governments pay for public safety.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's a great point, and that's why we are closely watching that. Depending upon where the legislators go, it could have a big impact on the city's revenue. And that does take us to the other side to discuss the expense side, beginning with, and this will just go over some of the major cost drivers, and you'll see on all the slides that they're all tied to a city council strategic goal, so that does keep staff thinking about the goals, the strategic goals that city council set, so we can make sure that all the budget requests are in line with one of those goals. So the first one, as we were just discussing, is a public safety personnel increase. You see, it's split out by police and fire, so we have to meet and confer contract increase for both. And in police, we have, we added six and a half positions mid-year this year, so we'll have to recognize the full cost of that in fiscal year '24. We've also included within the numbers of this preliminary budget, an additional four positions for police. Looking at fire, we added four new positions mid-year, and included in the fiscal year '24 preliminary budget is an additional five position. And I noticed, looking through this, that the only one that says proposed is police, and fire says requested, and as you move through the presentation, they say requested. It's actually proposed. If it's on this slide, it means that it's included in the number that is in the preliminary budget. The actual requested amount is a far greater number, and we'll cover that in a couple of slides. So moving from public safety... Oh, I'm sorry, we aren't going to move from public safety.
Let me cover these next couple of slides, if you will, John. What we presented to council is that there were the tiers of cover assessment that was done in fire in 2020, and it showed that we were 27 firefighters short. And then also, there was the police staffing study that was done in 2021, and that showed that we were 10 officers short. So then, what you asked us during visioning is come with a plan on how we prioritize these positions. Community safety is important, we need to know how to prioritize. So go to the next slide. And so what we've done is, you know, y'all have asked us, okay, where's the plan? And so this is the plan that we've worked through, is that in FY '23, council approved at the beginning adding four firefighters and two fire inspector investigators, as well as two police officers. And so that's this current fiscal year. We also brought you a mid-year budget amendment where we added another four firefighters and two police officers. So for fiscal year '24, that we'll be talking about tonight and that we're asking you to consider, is at the beginning of the fiscal year, we'd be adding another four firefighters, one fire investigator, as well as three police officers. And then if revenues continue to trend up, then we'd want to come back mid-year again to add another four firefighters and two police officers. So that takes a really big chunk, you know, of what's required, and we'll get it done in kind of a short period of time. As far as fiscal year '25, what we anticipate is that we would request additional officers, that'd be the last officer of the 10. Of course, that doesn't mean, that only gets us up to the 21 numbers, so there may still be others based on the growth and everything we've had, so that the chief will still be evaluating if there's anything further we need to do in future fiscal years. But just to get us to this number, we would be requesting an additional police officer, and then what I've talked with the fire chief about is really about getting the safer grants, and that stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, and that's a federal grant where basically the federal government will cover the cost, either full or a portion of the cost, for a certain number of years, and then it'll be up to us to take that on. So it'll give us some time to catch up with some of the other, you know, very much critical needs of our other departments, and allow us to phase in those new positions for the firefighters over time. So that is the plan. That is the plan that we're bringing forward as far as how we can get this done in a very systematic, methodical, and, you know, achievable way. So just wanted to present that to you tonight so that y'all have that for future discussion. Yes, Mayor?
Two questions. One, is these fire inspector investigator positions, do those three make a dent in the 27 firefighters that we need?
They do.
As in, have we had firefighters doing that, and now we need to assign those jobs? So we've got firefighters doing firefighter work? I don't know the answer to that. And then the other question is, while I'm giving somebody time to think about that one, is the public safety, they were public safety liaison, I think there's a different term for them. Are we looking at adding any more of those? I assume not, because they're not on this list.
We will, and the chief continues to look at that because of the fact that those are less expensive to hire, and there are some critical needs that they can satisfy, and so that we can get those done. But what I've told and communicated to them is that it's really important that we make a dent on the 27 and the 10.
Absolutely.
Right, and so we need to do that while recognizing that there are other needs that they have. So we're trying to prioritize and balance, but my focus right now is on the 27 and 10, and then the chief is also looking at how we can do violent crime and address those kinds of things. Chief, anything that I might have missed that you want to elaborate on?
I understand they weren't substituting far, but they were enhancement to.
Correct.
Good evening, Stan Sanders, Police Chief. To echo what Ms. Reyes said, we already have three PSSs, Police Service Specialists. They have been game changers, I can assure you. They are taking tons of reports. Regrettably, that's going to reflect an increase in crime because we're able to take all of those reports versus they remain in the queue, then the citizen just gives up. Those PSSs are now able to make front contact and then get all those reports done. With that said, in this mid-year fiscal '23 budget adjustment, you authorize an additional two PSSs. So we're in the process of getting those hired, so we will move to five. Ideally, I need a supervisor for that unit, so once we grow it to six, I think we'll be pretty well set. So thank you for your vision to get that done. They've been game changers.
Well, I've heard good things, so I just didn't know. So there's actually two more that have already been set aside for this year?
For '23, that's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, in all fairness, the chief did ask for some, you know, crime analysts to help us, and again, this was the conversation, the dynamic conversation in regard to, this is what council has said we need to do, you know, I'm not discounting that these are critical needs that you have, but we need to make traction on these, and then let's evaluate that, you know, along with the other needs of the department. So that's kind of where we're at, and there may be some of that that comes mid-year based on what the needs are and how we assess and see where we're at.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Turn your microphone on, please, sir.
When you talk about fire investigators, are we talking about fire marshals, more or less?
Yes, sir.
How many do we have now?
We have one fire marshal, but he has more people in his department. I see him stepping forward, Mr. Jonathan Henderson. So if there are any other questions specifically on that, I know he can answer that for you.
Well, at one time, we didn't have enough, and a lot of apartment complexes were getting neglected, I guess, not by y'all, but y'all didn't have the staff. Do you have the staff now to provide that service to her?
We're covering a fair amount of the ongoing inspections, and so the division is kind of split into two different sectors. So we have existing construction and new construction. New construction, we attempt to keep the development community happy with ongoing construction inspections, and the existing construction is apartments and businesses and everything that's not new construction. But specifically, what we're asking for right now is a fire investigator, so they would be dedicated to investigate fires within the city of San Marcos. It's really difficult right now to go through and do both of those jobs at the same time. That's kind of what we're running into.
It takes them off of doing the other things, and so this is to try to help make sure that they've got dedicated staff when a fire does occur, or an arson or something like that is suspected, that they can actually have that person go in and do that without neglecting all the other things that they need to be doing.
Well, another role that they're playing also, they're preventing those fires.
Right.
Correct.
And making sure they got their smoke detectors and all that kind of stuff working. Thank you, we appreciate everything y'all guys do.
Well, also, on the inspections, if we can keep up better, that means construction goes forward in a timely manner, and we're not holding up any progress.
Right, it's all interrelated.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Is that everything? So now, we will move on from public safety and talk about the other general fund employees, the personnel side. Included in the preliminary budget presented is a total of $4.3 million to address implementation of the compensation study, and this includes both what the budget policy said that we were able to do, which is the 5%, plus the additional 2% that Ms. Reyes shared in the introductory remarks that she's requesting. So the sum of both of those is the $4.3 million. Also, on the personnel side, there are 16 new positions requested, and this is another spot where it should say proposed instead of requested. There is actually a total of 82 positions that have been requested in the general fund. Included in this preliminary budget are 16 positions at a cost of $2 million. Ms. Reyes touched a little bit on the turnover and that it is starting to stabilize. City council has probably seen this chart in the past, and you can see fiscal year '23, there's an asterisk there, just that we're forecasting that number based on where we are right now. And you can see citywide, we're looking at a decrease from 17 to 16% comparing to the prior year. If you look at non-civil service, that has a decrease of 2%. It's going down from 21 to 19%. Our civil service is remaining flat at 6%, with police... Our civil service is remaining flat at 6%, with police remaining flat, and FIRE actually ticking up a little bit. It went from 1 to 2%. All in all, the, the, the numbers are stabilizing. When, when you look back from where we were, from COVID on, the investment that has been made this year is starting to, to show that it's having an impact on employees.
Are retirements included in this?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
This next slide shows the impact of inflation on an employee's salary. We, we've talked a lot up to this point about the impact of inflation on the city expenditures and purchasing power. This slide shows the impact of an employee. And it has a hypothetical employee who started at the city in 2020, started at a salary of $50,000. And in 2021, that employee received a cost of living adjustment of 2% from the city. And that same year, the Consumer Price Index, or the CPI, was 3%. So that employee's adjusted salary or purchasing power actually decreased. So the employee was, salary went up to $51,000, and the purchasing power went down to $49,500. And, and that following year, the employee received the COLA of 4%. And that year was when CPI hit the highest, and it was at 13%. So the employee's salary went up to $53,000, and purchasing, purchasing power dropped down to $45,600. Most recently, in this fiscal year, there was a COLA authorized of 5%, and CPI was 4%. So in this year, that, that employee did gain some ground. The, the salary went to $55,600, and the purchasing power increased to $45,800. So if, if you look at the chart over at the right, it, it shows each year for the COLA and the CPI, the total salary increase across that time period was $5,600 to the employee, and the purchasing power for that employee actually decreased by $4,100 because of the impacts of inflation.
This is a good slide to have and to illustrate what, what has happened. Thank you.
Yes, and it, there's a little, there's a note on there that, according to the 2022 Employee Engagement Survey, that competitive wages was a key issue on why cause employees to leave the city and find work elsewhere. So the, this next slide is just showing the major cost drivers, other than personnel, that are included in that preliminary '24 budget. The first being the citywide janitorial services contract. In fiscal year '24, it's estimated to increase by about $519,000. There's two reasons for that. One is bringing the Public Services Center online. The, the amount of square foot that the cleaning companies have them to address has increased. And the other is just the cleaning companies are going through the same thing that all of us are with the increase of costs due to inflation. There is a request for a proposal that is estimated to be issued around July 10th. So we'll be bringing the, the results of that back to city council within the next month or so. The, the next major cost driver is the municipal court lease. The current lease for municipal court is $92,000. We're budgeting $200,000 for the new facility, and there's a chance that there might be an overlap of when we might be paying, might have to pay lease at both locations. So included in the budget total is $292,000 for that municipal court lease. We're hopeful that it can be worked out without duplicating the lease payments, though. The next is street maintenance. There's $267,000 being invested in the city streets. And for historic preservation, there's $100,000 being set aside to address projects that are going to be identified in the historic, or the historic preservation plan. And that request for a proposal is supposed to go out in the next couple of weeks as well. There's $100,000 for city, city facility maintenance. And just to address something that city council gave guidance on during the budget policy, the Human Services Advisory Board, the general fund contribution increased by $50,000 to $550,000. And then there was $100,000 of the American Rescue Plan Act funding set aside for that, those board services. This slide just provides an overview of some current historic preservation projects that the city has going on. There are, first, with the National Register of Historic Places, some nominations. These are grant-funded projects. We have the Dunbar Local Historic District, as well as the Dunbar School Home Economics Building. We're seeking to get both on the National Register. And the estimated completion date for this is January of '24. On the Dunbar School Home Economics Building, the preservation plan has been completed, and it identified some near and long-term plans for stabilization and maintenance of that building. The Public Works has began a project on the stabilizing the structure of the building. And there's a bullet there to just, like in all projects, future funding could expedite this project, the funding's made available for the project. The, the final item on this is the Historic Preservation Plan. This plan will identify short and long-term goals and objectives that'll help tell the diverse history of San Marcos. It's actually the first type of plan that will be completed of its kind. And as we mentioned in a previous slide, there's $100,000 being set aside in the fiscal year '24 budget to, to go towards some of the objectives that are identified from this plan. Couple of slides ago, we talked about the, that there are a lot more requests than what were included in the fiscal year '24 preliminary budget, and this slide just has the total of all the supplemental requests. Supplemental requests are requests for, for either operating funds for new programs and services, or to add new employees. And so in total, we're estimating to have about $2 million of capacity. That number may change, dependent upon how revenues change. We may have to reduce that number. There were a total of 82 requests for new employees, for $8 million. And if you recall back on that first slide, there were 16 of those 82 that are actually included in that preliminary budget. There were 12 requests for $1.2 million in operational requests. And I don't have the exact number of those that actually are included in, in the budget, but it's only a couple of them. There's not very many of them. Most of the money was put towards the new personnel requests to help departments be able to keep up with the growth of the city. Looking at the non-recurring, or the capital-type items, we're estimating to have a million dollars of capacity. There were 38 requests for $2 million, and we're, we're estimating to be able to have about a million dollars to meet about half of those requests. So the fiscal year '22 fund balance, in excess of the 25%, is $5 million. And this slide has a proposed uses for that $5 million. The first item is the fiscal year '23 Capital Improvement Program. On January 6, city council received a presentation from Mr. Condor about the projects that would be cash-funded and bond-funded. So $1.2 million of that was, has been set aside for the cash-funded projects for the fiscal year '23 CIP. We're proposing to use a million dollars of it. That'll cover that, the million-dollar capacity to cover the $2 million of requests and capital outlay items from the previous slide. That's where that capacity will come from. And then that'll leave $2.8 million to put towards city hall.
For a plan, or? Sorry, Mayor. For a plan, or, or purchasing building, or what would that entail?
So that, that would entail anything that would go for a new city hall, whether it's design, construction, any of those things. But we're going to be putting together a timeline that just kind of tells you of a plan about what we have looking forward. We're also going to be looking at how we can leverage that as, with the Guadalupe property that we own as well, you know, to see if there's something that might help with the financing of that. So that's, that's what we're working on, and, and so we'll be bringing that to y'all at a future date.
And that will bring us to the decision points for the general fund.
Do you want me to ask these?
Well, however you want to handle it, Mayor. I, I can read the first one off, and then there could be some discussion, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and say, council, these are the items that I'm sure you picked up when you read your packet, that these are the decision points that, that staff is asking us to weigh in on at this point in time. These are summary of several of the things that Mr., well, many of the things that Mr. Locke has, has already talked about. And so one of the questions is going to be our, and, and if I say any of this incorrect, please jump in there, because we want to make sure I get this right, and I present it correctly, so that the response is, is correct. That we're looking at, the, the budget projection, I guess, would be sales tax at an overall increase of 4%. If y'all are in agreement, you can, and I need to get Mr. Gleason, because he's online, and make sure I can get his input. And, yeah, there he is. And so I'm, I'm looking to see thumbs up, yeses, nos, comments, as we go through each one of these. And I'm looking for at least four for good, good. Okay, so Mr. Prather's good. Mr. Mendoza's good. Mr. Scott's not here.
I don't have an opinion right now.
Okay.
Mayor, can we refresh with, what did we go up last year?
I'll have to ask staff for that. And this is the projection, and you remember that we, we try to keep that pretty close, and we always end up exceeding it. But I believe two years ago, we started upping that projection a little bit closer to reality. And so we're not exceeding it as, the expectation as much.
Correct.
Sales tax is still going up, we're just not as surprised as, as we used to be. And so we're, we're, we're funding that a little tighter. And so I think that, you, you may be remembering that conversation that we had. I don't remember what it was last year, maybe five, Mr. Staff?
I want to say it was closer to seven, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the question, being honest.
What did we?
What was it last year?
Right.
Oh, we, for this current year? We estimated a 4% growth for the current year.
Okay. And we're still exceeding that?
Yes, Mayor. I, I think the slide's saying that we're going to finish around 9% is what we're estimating.
So, you good?
Mayor, my hand is up for a different reason.
Yeah, I, I said Mr. Staff, but then everybody jumped in there, so that was, okay. Yes, sir?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Chase-Steph, Assistant City Manager. I wanted to answer your question about the 27 firefighters versus the new positions in prevention. I needed a minute to, to gather the research to get you a definitive answer.
Okay.
The 27 firefighters mentions, mentioned by Ms. Reyes in the standards of cover study are simply shift personnel on the engines, response personnel.
They are firefighters. That's what I thought, but.
And the, the, that study really didn't focus on the needed growth in, in supplemental areas like prevention, because every city handles those very differently.
Right.
For example, in some cities, they may even live in the police department.
Right.
So, so, so our staff in fire prevention and, and the fire administration folks are estimating the needed growth based upon really the demand on their jobs now and the growth in the city.
Okay. I just didn't know if we had any firefighter titles helping with those.
They are.
Such that when we get more fire investigators, that really means we're getting more people back into the firefighter position? That's where I was going with that. But I get that we need 27. But with the new inspector positions, does that free up some folks, so that we've got firefighters as firefighters?
Indirectly, there have been times when we have assigned shift personnel to fire prevention to meet a need.
Right.
They also hope in overtime. So indirectly, it could.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Always helpful. Mr. Gleason, are you good with the 4%?
Yeah, I am, Mayor. I think that's pretty conservative, is where we need to be.
It is.
Staff's time to go, then we'll pass. So, yeah, I'm good.
Yes, and I'm sure that we still wait until the, the spring for some of our one-time costs to make sure that we're meeting that. And the COVID year, that really worked well for us, didn't it?
Absolutely. And I don't anticipate that we would always do the mid-year as much as we have, but with the needs that we've had, especially with the public safety, that's been something that we need to do. I don't anticipate that going '25, that we're going to need to do that, but we'll see. I mean, you know, of course, that's just what we know now. It's a snapshot in time.
Well, I'm talking about buying heavy equipment or something.
Things could change.
Correct. That kind of stuff.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So we've, we've got enough yeses to move forward on that one. And so the next one is often our, our big discussion, and that is maintaining the property tax rate at the current rate. And I don't have what we've done the last few years in front of me. We've, we've stayed, we, we have been a little lower, but then we have gone back up. And Ms. Reyes, remind me, when the bond election was held, that we were authorized to go up to 261 point something?
Six.
It's a little higher than this.
It is higher than this. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
From 2017.
Right. Just something to remember, and I guess we've been fortunate that we've had growth in our city and growth in our tax base.
Right, so we've been able to bring it a little bit lower than that.
That's been helpful.
Citizen authorized amount.
Yes. So, anyway, so my question is, are we good? I believe at our budget workshop, we said no higher than the current tax rate. If we could get lower, it'd be great, but we, this is where we need to do, is no higher. So I need to know if we're still good with it. You're good with it? Good with it? I see three yeses over here. Mr. Prather, you, or?
It was one of our goals of this budget, to increase public safety, and this property tax rate will pay for that.
Yes, we're, we, by, by keeping it, it does mean more money is coming in, but it, we are getting a lot for those dollars, and we're getting where we kind of got behind on some things, so we're getting caught up. Mr. Gleason? You're on mute.
Sorry, I clicked it twice. Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm okay for keeping it, you know, as it is for right now, and I know there's just so many questions about exactly what's going to come out of the legislature yet, and exactly what this means. So, you know, i- if, if there is no additional relief, but I think something's going to come out of the legislature, you know, we may need to kind of readdress this, or look at maybe some additional homesteads. But I'm, I'm for keeping it for now, as long as the discussion is still going on at the legislature, and we'll see what, what comes out of that the next 60 days.
Right, and we're not setting the tax rate today. We're just giving the, the staff some, a number to work with, and as Ms. Reyes indicated at the beginning, there still could be some changes, and I'm glad we're not setting the tax rate today.
Correct.
But of course, legislature will get all that squared away before we have to set a tax rate. They know what they need to do and when, so.
Yeah, and it would have been nice if they'd have got it done in the general session, so that we would have this idea now and not be doing it in special session.
Well, if something changes, staff's going to let us know, and we will, we'll go around again on, on that. The next question is to address the compensation study to go another 2%, where we were already at 5% of the pool of salaries, so we're looking at another 2% to go into the pool, so that staff can address market adjustments and things like that. So that will be coming, we don't have the full report yet, so.
We don't, we don't. We're hoping it'll be done in August, is the plan. And so basically, it'd be a pool of money that would allow us to then work with the compensation consultants to see how we need to adjust our employee salaries to be more market competitive. So it allows us more money to work with, to really make some marked improvements on that, so.
Okay. All right. So I'm looking to see who's okay with that, or if you have another question, or if you have comments at any time. If I say, are you okay with it? Comments are okay. I'm just, if you don't have any, I'm just trying to get where we need to go.
Sounds good.
You good, Mr. Prather? Okay?
Yes.
All right. And I'm good with it, too. Mr. Gleason?
Yeah, I just had one comment on it, Mayor, is that I'm glad to see this in here, and I really appreciated Mr. Locke's graph that showed inflationary pressures of actual what people, you know, take home with their dollars, you know, what they're getting out of it. And inflationary pressures are not completely letting up yet, so I'm, I'm perfectly fine with this. Ms. Reyes, did you say we were going to get that study in August, potentially?
That's the plan, is for it to be complete in August. Then it'll take some time for us to finalize things and, and bring things to, to council. Then it'll take some time for us to finalize things and bring things to council, once we finally get that through.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's going to be a lot of spreadsheet work.
Yes, and a lot of working with departments. I will say that this is the first time in being a part of a compensation study where we've had a very broad amount of input. Typically, it has been something that, you know, HR has worked on primarily. This time, we have a stakeholder group of directors who, and some assistant directors, who actually go in with us, we're meeting bi-weekly, we're talking, we're getting questions answered, all of that. So, it's been a really good thoughtful process, because we've got to get this right, and we've got to do it in a way that has buy-in, and people feel like they're, you know, like the methodology is solid, and so, that's what we're doing. So, very proud of the great work of our team.
Well, and something that we're still dealing with is other, there were some other cities that just went with some rather substantial across-the-board raises. So, I'm guessing, I'm hoping this will get us somewhat caught up, but I'm glad we're doing it in this thoughtful and analytic way.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
That compensation study, that's being done internally, or that was like an outside contractor?
It's an outside contractor.
Just curious, because Linda did a great job analyzing some other stuff for us. But I was like, that's a lot of work for one person, okay, good.
And that's only for four positions. It's, you know, so much harder when you've got, you know, 200-plus that you're looking at as far as job titles, you know, that we're surveying.
Yeah, I'm excited to get that, those results and to do good things with it, thank you.
And the survey is out. We've already started to receive responses from some of the peer comparators. So, we will be looking at not only compensation, but we're also going to be looking at benefits and things of that nature as part of things, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, well, I'm kind of familiar with this, because the university was doing a lot of this when I was on the staff council a long time ago. And they were allowing us to give input and explaining what was happening. So, it's all interesting, and again, a lot of spreadsheets.
Well, and I think also, we don't, right now, we don't have a formal compensation philosophy. It's always been just kind of like in practice. So, having something that's a formal compensation philosophy is extremely important, because I would like to bring that to council to make sure that you buy in to the philosophy that we have there. Because when I come and bring you proposals, then it's something that we're saying, okay, yes, this is in line with council's policy, direction, and decision in terms of what that compensation philosophy needs to be. So, that's, it's a very important step. And so, we're going to take a lot of time to really make sure that we get that philosophy right and bring that forward for y'all to look at.
I love that. We need to take care of our employees, because they're who take care of the city and make sure everything runs properly and all the services are delivered. So, if we don't take care of them, we are not really doing our job.
I just love that you guys are being so intentional. I remember my first year in office, I had no idea what was going on, so I like Googled, like, what are best practices to like make sense of things? And I specifically asked what the compensation, like, philosophy was. So, it's really cool to hear that you guys are really just trying to take a holistic look at it. That's awesome. I think our neighbors will be happy to hear that, because our employees are our neighbors too, so...
Right.
Cool.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Majority of our budget comes from the sales tax, 39%.
Correct.
It used to be a lot higher at one time, wasn't it?
It did, and that's the positive thing. I mean, first thing, I know with, in the years that I've been here, I've seen a lot of change. And we used to be heavily dependent on sales tax, but also on the outlet malls. And so, seeing that sales tax may be, it's shifting a little bit downward, and we're also less reliant, it's not to say we're not reliant on the sales, on the outlet malls, but we're getting less reliant. And the fact that council, you know, before would say, hey, we have a lot of our property tax rate that goes to pay debt. We don't want to pay a substantial amount of debt. We want it to really shift and be, what can we afford? Look at our maintenance and operations and make sure that we're not living outside of our means. And so, we've made that fundamental shift. And so, now you will see that a greater amount of property tax actually goes into maintenance and operations of our, you know, of our city operations, of our organization, versus paying for debt.
I guess some of those apartments are paying off.
Yes, yes.
And new industry.
Yes.
And new home sites.
Thank you.
So, speaking of such things, our next decision point is use of the fund balance in excess of the amount that we need to keep for our emergencies. Because Mr. Locke knows every time we talk about spending fund balance, I go, what, wait, no, wait. Where's that, the minimum that we need to keep? And of course, he's keeping, keeping us all straight, making sure that we're not spending what we shouldn't be spending. And I have faith in that. So, it looks like we may have about $5 million for this next year. And staff suggestions are to do some more cash funding on the CIP. Yay, thank you, I've been begging for that for years, we just don't think we were able to. For FY '24, some capital outlay in the 1 million that he talked about, 2.1 requested, but 1 is what they feel like we can do. And then to start putting some funding towards City Hall at 2.8. That's their recommendation. I need to know if y'all are okay with that, or if you have a different number, or different numbers to propose. Okay, so Mr. Prather's good, Mr. Mendoza's good.
What actually is the percentage we're going to put for the rainy day fund?
25%.
It's 25%, and that is still there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the 2.8 coming from where, for the City Hall?
This is the amount, so, we have to keep a minimum of 25% per financial policy, right? For our bond rating and everything. So, this $5 million that you see here that we're making recommendations for, this is the amount above that 25%. So, it is coming from your savings account, but it's the excess that's required by your financial policy.
It's like that extra sales tax that we didn't count on? That's the money that we're talking about. I don't want to say it's extra, but it's more than what we had budgeted for. We anticipated more, but we only budgeted for a certain amount. Which gives us this pool of money to deal with. So, Ms. Garza?
I don't have enough information or community input to support this. That's like a bajillion-dollar decision, but I feel like generally, it seems fine, but it feels weird for me to say yes right now.
Okay, and Mr. Gonzalez, you said you were good with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gleason, thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm perfectly fine with this, as long as we're making progress on the public safety front. And staff has looked like they've done a really good job of laying out a multi-year approach to this. So, I'm fine with it.
All right, and I am too. And the next one is to continue monitoring the airport's revenues and expenses to see if a general fund transfer is needed in good years and, I shouldn't say it that way. In most years, we still have to kick in a little for the airport. And so, and I know that y'all are always monitoring that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know why we wouldn't want you to continue that. So, are we good with just continuing to watch that and see that we hope that we won't have to roll any money over? Okay?
Then they're not in the rhythm anymore like they used to be when we first got on the council?
Not to the degree that when you first got on the council, you know, we have been having some discussions with Ms. Berenato and Mr. Wimberly about, you know, just kind of making sure that they're set up in a way that they can efficiently and effectively operate the airport, you know, with some of the growth that's being seen around there, and just some of what we want to set up that airport to be. So, it's more discussion to be had, but we just wanted to make council aware in case there is something that we see that needs to come back. We didn't want it to come in August, and y'all be like, you never told us anything. This is the first time we've ever heard anything about the airport. So, that's really just to get it on your radar, to know that we're looking at it too, to kind of see where...
There might need to be a transfer.
Correct.
But we were down to 3,000 or something, I think, one year?
And I think a big reason for this, and Mr. Pantaleon may have more to add, is just that we added them to the cost allocation. And so, that was something that they weren't being done, that wasn't being done prior, where we weren't charging them for the use of administration and, you know, some of the things that legal and some of the things that happen that our staff assists them with.
Thank you.
And did that start this past year?
Year before last.
Or year before?
That was FY '22, Mayor.
'22, yes, that was year before last.
And I'm actually looking at last year's budget, Joe Pantaleon, Assistant City Manager. And in FY '22, they estimated a slight revenue of cash flow of almost $20,000. But, you know, they, as they progress through the year, their revenues and expenditures are always very close. So, it's, you know, in most years, in the past, the general fund has had to kick in a few thousand dollars. They're trending right around, you know, breaking even, but we just want to continue to monitor that. And in fact, the last couple of years, they have turned a profit.
So, we're heading in the right direction, Mr. Gonzalez. So, are you good with this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Prather?
Absolutely, and the airport used to be a, you know, significant loss to the city before we had this arrangement.
In the hundreds of thousands, yeah. So, we have made actually tremendous progress over the, well, I guess since TAP's been there. All right, let's see, I'm good with Mr., Mr. Gleason? I see a thumbs up from Mr. Gleason, Ms. Garza?
Yes.
All right, so, counsel, do we have any other direction on the general fund? If not, we will move on to the next item. Mr. Locke?
Right. Next, we'll go into our special revenue funds, and discuss a couple of the other governmental funds. The first and the largest special revenue fund, our hotel tax fund. If you, looking at a FY '23 estimate compared to a budget, you can see that we're estimating to bring in more revenues than what we budgeted. We're estimating to bring in over $5 million, and we budgeted just over $4 million. On the expense side, we're estimating to spend about $300,000 less than what our fiscal year '24, or '23 budget is. And so, that will give us an ending fund balance of just over $3 million. There isn't a percent requirement in this particular fund. But that fund balance is there to take care of any one-time expenses that may come up in the hotel tax fund.
Since we have employees in this, why don't we have a minimum fund balance?
Per financial policy, I don't, because we don't issue debt out of this fund. Is that really why, Mr. Locke?
Well, the, the mayor does have a point, you know, where there are employees in this fund. There, I have seen the hotel tax fund have a fund balance requirement set for it, just to make sure that we are able to cover some of the operating expenses like in the event of something like COVID or something.
We don't have one in ours, so that could be something we could look at.
Well, I suspect when we brought them into the city, it was just something we didn't address, and it just hasn't been addressed, but maybe we need to...
We can definitely look at that and see what we need to do, because you're exactly right. I mean, when COVID hit, we were really trying to figure out, okay, how do we keep them afloat? And got really creative on, let's let them give some services to the general fund, you know, so that we could continue, and very proud that we never had to lay anybody off or anything like that. But it would make it a lot more seamless if we did have a fund balance that we could at least use if absolutely needed.
Well, just per policy, I don't know why they would be treated differently? Because don't other, all other funds have fund balance requirements?
All of our other ones, well, our major operating ones, water, wastewater, electric.
That's what I mean, the enterprise, et cetera, funds. Okay, counsel, are y'all wanting to look at fund balance for the hotel dollars? I have a yes from Mr. Mendoza. Okay, yes, hold on, let me check, Mr. Gleason? Are you good with looking at that?
Yes, Mayor, and absolutely. You know, if we ever have a situation like COVID again, we would have some reserve capacity to continue functioning, at least until we figure out what's going on. I figure there's probably not a policy, because at one time, it wasn't a huge amount of money, and it's grown exponentially the last few years. So, you know, let's look at putting some sort of a fund balance in place.
Are you good with that? It's so it'll be like the other departments, okay. So, we're good with that, and...
And that might not come as part of, just so everybody's clear, you know, that wouldn't probably come as part of the budget that we adopt, but it's a separate action that we'd look at in updating our financial policy to include that, is that...
Yes, I'm looking at, we might even just address it next February, but just to get started on that process.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I didn't have to be right this minute, but get started.
I didn't expect you to include that in the 2024 already, you know, with a short time.
Perfect, thank you.
We're okay. However, looking at the dollars, I think we can afford to do that. So, it's not like we're having to look for money in order to do that. Okay, please continue, Mr. Locke.
Okay, that just brings us to our fiscal year '24 preliminary budget for hotel tax. We are estimating $4.9 million revenue. That is lower than where we're estimating to finish '23. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides when we look at a little more detail into the revenue. On the expenses, it shows that we're budgeting more expenses than revenues at about $5.4 million. When you adjust that by the one-time expenses, the actual operating recurring expenses is $4.5 million, which is about $400,000 below what we're estimating revenue to come in at. So, that would be a balanced budget at this point, and it'll continue to be refined.
Okay.
This slide shows the hotel tax annual growth from 2018 forward. And within this slide, it shows the percent growth. So, you can see that we're estimating to finish at 11% over our '22 hotel taxes this year. And what we're estimating for 2024 is 3% over what we collected in 2022. So, in fiscal year '22, we collected $3.6 million, and this would be 3% of that. Hotel taxes have been budgeted a little more conservatively than even sales taxes because of the impacts of COVID. And so, there's certainly some room in there if City Council wanted to look at increasing that a little bit and still be within the, on a conservative estimate, right? That is an extremely conservative number that's being proposed.
Yeah, I'm concerned about this number, but, okay.
Okay. And this slide is similar to the one that we looked at at, and with sales tax, and it just shows the 12-month percent change in our hotel taxes. And you can see, pre-COVID, our hotel tax revenues were increasing. They hit a peak of 9.7 right before COVID hit, and then after COVID, they fell to a negative 55%. They rebounded, hitting a high of 118%. And just as with sales tax, that growth is slowing a little. We still are seeing growth, though, and the last four or five months has been in the 10% to 12% year-over-year growth rate. So, that just brings us to our summary side of the hotel tax revenue assumptions. The hotel taxes, which is the, there are two taxes. The hotel taxes is 7%, that's the general hotel tax, and the venue taxes, 2%. And that is set aside just for the conference center. It's to retire that debt that was issued for the conference center. So, the 7% portion is 75% of our total revenue in this fund. And we're estimating 3% over the fiscal year '22 collections. The venue tax is 21% of revenue, and those are also being estimated at 3% over the '22 collections. Anything collected for this gets transferred into the fund that retires the debt for the conference center. So, no matter what we estimate for this, all of those revenues will go towards the conference center debt. And the other revenue makes up a small portion, 4% of revenue. And those are transferred, the biggest part of that is to transfer from the general fund to cover Main Street expenses that aren't eligible to be paid from the hotel tax fund. There's also some interest and some late charges and penalties.
Okay, and since the hotel taxes are a percent of what the room rate is, so if the room rates went down like after COVID to encourage people to travel, then that would have meant that our hotel tax income would go down, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And did those room rates go down right after COVID, trying to get people to come? I'm looking at...
I do not believe so.
They did not go down?
They didn't.
They did.
Sorry.
I need a stretch.
Rebecca Ybarra, Destination Services. During COVID, yes, the rates did go down. They have increased, and when they did go down, we were selling more rooms, so the revenue did increase. And at this point, the rates have increased.
Oh, I know now they are, but I was just talking about COVID, and just as we were starting to come out of COVID, if the rates had gone down, just to try to get people to stay in hotels.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that would explain more of why the rate went down, because the seven percent was on a smaller number.
And people weren't traveling.
Yeah, it's both. But it wasn't just people not traveling, okay, thank you. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Locke, please continue.
Now, moving into the expense side, there are, this slide has broke out to the three major cost categories. First, beginning with personnel. The cost of implementing the compensation study in this fund would be seventy-five thousand dollars. There is a new position included within this preliminary budget for Main Street at sixty-six thousand dollars. And there is a new intern that is also included for twenty thousand dollars. On the operating side, there is a placeholder for historical preservation of fifty thousand dollars. There, that hasn't been assigned a particular use, but it can just be used towards something related to the historical preservation. And there is, for city branding, there was a supplemental request for eighty thousand dollars. And also for the Main Street facade grant, twenty thousand dollars. That will actually be covered by the general fund, that facade grant. For the one-time cost drivers that you saw, the second phase or second part of wayfinding is five hundred thousand, and refurbishing the conference center cooling tower is four hundred and eleven thousand.
I didn't remember a second phase of wayfinding, okay.
So this is the total supplemental request in the hotel tax fund. There were two position requests that we just went over, and there were two operating requests. All of those are included in that preliminary budget number.
And what's the position for Main Street?
An administrative assistant.
Thank you.
The next couple of slides just go over the city's branding, since there is an item in here to help fund the city's branding and move it forward. This first slide is just the brand purpose and promise. And so I'll just read it, says, "The city of San Marcos, Texas, experience and riches. All of life's journeys, as a place to live, learn, visit, work, play, shop, and grow. San Marcos brings people together while still letting them follow their own path. The community's many assets, from the river to the university to the historic downtown, set the stage for a vibrant interplay of ideas and lifestyles."
So I'm going to ask Ms. Surly to explain the next couple of slides. So for keeping, I think it's only one more slide, actually, maybe two more slides. And so this is just really meant to be a very high-level discussion. It's not meant to, you know, whether we like the way that the alternates look. It's really more about, from a funding philosophy, do you want to go for a full branding campaign, or do you just want to tweak what we currently have, so we know how much money to put in the budget? So what she's going to show you are just some concepts as an option, so Ms. Surly.
Thank you very much. Lauren Surly, Director of Communications and IGR. So really, there are three questions or three options that I'm providing to you guys today. So one would be to keep with our current logo and brand. The other would be to make some alterations to our logo, or the third, like Ms. Reyes mentioned, which would be move forward with getting a completely new logo and brand. So what we already read here, the purpose and promise, this was a brand statement that was created back in two thousand and ten, when we completely did the full rebrand of the city. So taking a look at our current logo, so this is a logo that you all know as the waterfall logo. This was the one that was done in two thousand and ten that has that corresponding branding statement. So this is our visual identifier that really helps people recognize and differentiate the city of San Marcos from other organizations like Hayes County. So if you see this one, this logo, you know that you are with the city organization. So a quick branding kind of one-on-one, just so that we're all kind of on the same page with terminology here. This image alone is an important element of branding, but by no means does it encompass the full scope of what branding represents within the community. A brand is not a logo or a tagline. A brand is a shared system of beliefs and values that define the community and attract others to it, which is exactly that brand statement that we read just before. So community branding is all about discovering what truly makes an area unique. And in the most simple way that I can describe this is, a logo is not a brand, but a brand must include a logo. So looking at this logo, how does this logo reflect the brand? By our brand standards, the red in the logo actually symbolizes the town. It echoes the solid brick and stone of the historic downtown San Marcos, as well as the Texas State Campus. These are places of learning and for work that have laid foundations for business, leisure, and community life. The M obviously signifies our river and the Three Falls that we all know and love out at Rio Vista Park. It's also, I think, really meaningful, and to me, whenever I'm looking at a brand in this logo, it means a lot to me to see the river right there in the middle of our logo, because it connects the town, which is the red portion that I just talked about, to the landscape, the green part of our logo. So I think that that really means something to our community, and everybody is tied to the river. So we also have a tagline, which is "We'd Love Your Company", which is a statement of friendship and welcome that invites a broad array of audiences, including visitors and business prospects. So that was option one, so we can keep that logo. Or for option two, I am aware that there are parts of the logo that counsel dislikes, and after receiving those requests, we made some alterations to that logo to reflect that feedback. You can see that there on your screen. I do want to say that by making these alterations, we will need to file for a new trademark, because this does make it a brand-new logo. So we would have to, that cost would be around a thousand dollars plus legal fees, and we would have to update our license agreements that we currently have with our community partners as well. Of course, because it's a different logo, we would have to update the logo throughout the city, whether it be on business cards, shirts, cars, all the things, which would be a pretty big chunk of money. And then, of course, the last option that we already mentioned would be to work with consultants and create a new brand and logo that fits into San Marcos, that we all think fits our San Marcos today. So the goal of that would be to have multiple public engagement opportunities and really create something that represents us all. I would estimate that a full rebrand of that nature would cost probably around fifty-five to seventy thousand dollars. And similar to option number two, where we made the alterations, we would still have to go through and make those changes. That would be by year basis, not something we would need to do at this moment. I think John has a few more slides before y'all are going to discuss that, but I'll be here for questions.
Do y'all want to discuss it while we're on this brand, instead of having to come back? Let's just go ahead and talk about it now.
Sure.
I can start.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I'm the one that hates it the most, so I've not liked it since we had it, and there's twenty reasons why. But the current logo with alterations, I forgot to send y'all the stuff that I did just with my little rudimentary word and text boxes. The second one is so much better, separating the two words and the capital letter. But I think the M needs to be a capital letter. The top line needs to line up with the top of the S, which means extending the waterfall, extending the M, so that it still comes down, and the "We'd Love Your Company" still fits in there. So that's something that I can send you, but to have the S capital and the M not, I think is not good, and goes back to some of the reasons why I hate the first one. I'm not crazy about that particular A, but at least it's a lowercase a, yay, that's wonderful, which was one of my objections, because we had combined capital and lowercase letters, and it just didn't, in my opinion, look all that good. I understand that this is different and that we would have to recopy right and all that other stuff, but because we've had this one so long, I can live with some modifications on this, and I don't see that we would have to, since it's not that different, that we would have to go spend a lot of money and rebrand everything to begin with, just as we get by, as we, you know, buy new logos to put on trucks or whatever, which I'm not sure this is on the trucks. I think that's on the trucks. But anyway, I would hope that we would phase that in and not go spend all that money in one year, because it's close enough to the same. So the M is the main issue that I've got at this point. Do you understand what I mean about, basically, you're stretching it up and not moving it up? That's, those are my thoughts on this, the good work that whoever's done it, yay.
I've always loved the city seal, but this is our current logo. If we're going to make some tweaks, I think what the mayor laid out sounded like a really good idea. But the M being bigger.
Being a true capital M, yeah.
I agree with that as well. I like the second option as well. I think it'd be easy to do.
M bigger, okay.
And honestly, just growing up here, it was always just, never quite understood what, why the colors were there, why the waterfall. I mean, I knew the waterfall was there and what the greens stood for, but coming in here, I wanted to kind of bring up some ideas. But after you explained what the colors mean and how it kind of goes together, I was going to shut up and say, okay, I was wrong. I think that making some changes would be a smart way to go about it. Thank you for explaining it. I think that it'd be beneficial if, I know it's kind of hard to explain it to every single citizen, but just being my hometown, born and raised, and then choosing to stay here, I think it's important that we know why. It's so important, but if I could just throw something out there, if there's any way we can include the people, if there's a color, or if there's something that we can associate that the personality of our town, the reason why we moved here, the reason why we stay here, is not just the beautiful waterfalls and the greenery and the historic preservation that we want to keep, but it's our people that are so important to our community. So if we could include that, I'd really appreciate something like that.
So I think that is part of the red. The red does represent the town folk and the people who come together to work downtown and go to our schools. So that is part of that one. And I would say, just as another option, if y'all really like the brand idea of this, if y'all like what this stands for, then we could go that way. But we could then also look at a new logo that we would all like, rather than just making these smaller changes to just make it buy. So we could just do the logo and not focus so much on the brand, if that's what y'all are interested in.
Well, FYI, we've had this one for.
Since two thousand and ten.
Fifteen, I was going to say fifteen years. We have had others that I liked a whole lot better, and I can think of, Ms. Reyes, two or three that we've been through. We were San Marcos, Texas Natural for quite some time, and we had some others. Matter of fact, I brought an old pen that I had in the other day that I still liked out better, so.
I have a question. Ms. Surly, in your professional opinion, like, what is the cost difference between changing the logo a bit and then like infusing this like slightly edited version throughout the city versus on like a rebrand?
So, did you say cost difference?
Yeah.
So truly, there's not much of a cost difference.
I see.
Really, the two, making the alterations or getting a new brand, you're having to do the same thing, except for it would allow, getting a new brand would allow for more community engagement and discussion within our, for our residents and for you guys to determine on, or land on one that you all truly love, rather than just making an exception or.
Right, so whenever we had this conversation last time, I just Googled real quick, like, how other governmental bodies kind of infuse a change, and that's what I kind of took from like a, for real, it's like a very quick Google search, I'm not going to lie. So having said that, I mean, honestly, the logo is the least of my concerns as an elected official. Like, that's not something super prevalent or even brought up when I chit-chat my neighbors at the H B. But if we all agree kind of that we want some changes, I think we should just, you know, do the whole rebrand, especially if it's going to cost the same. We have to replace stuff anyways. To Mr. Mendoza's point, something that can engage with, engage our neighbors, you know? Something fresh, I don't know. Personally, I don't like it, but it's also not that deep to me, so.
I will say that in doing the research for looking at different companies that have done the rebrand and marketing of that, it is really neat to see what they're able to do and go out with their community and hold these town halls and get their input and figure out what they truly believe San Marcos is. And hearing back from them was really cool, and I've seen other cities do it really well.
Yeah, I think it could be an opportunity.
To reconnect with.
And also to build on the momentum that y'all have engaged with, like, the momentum y'all have just had with all your community engagement, like we're telling Ms. Reyes last time we all met. We, like, our neighbors are noticing it, y'all being out there, so I feel like that might, it could be an opportunity to add to that. That's the only reason that I would go with the big one.
Well, the cost of implementing an altered and a new one would be basically the same, but the cost of acquiring a new one, y'all were quoting a hundred thousand dollars. I think that was before you were here.
So the quote to implement a new and go out and get a consultant and go through all the public engagement, we're thinking it's probably around fifty-five to seventy thousand dollars was the last quote that I've received. So yes, you're right, that is an extra cost, and that would be the difference between the two. But it would also include getting it trademarked and going through that whole process probably much quicker. I don't know that I mentioned this, but the trademark process will probably take about a year. So we still couldn't use this for about a year.
So what would be the additional cost over and above what we would have to do anyway to acquire a new one? Because you just said the fifty-five to whatever, included a bunch of that other stuff. So what's the extra cost for getting a new one?
I would say fifty-five to seventy thousand dollars to get a full new brand and logo. That would be with our consultants. For the alteration, we would still have to go out and get a new trademark.
No, I got all that. I got, I got, I got what's the same. I'm trying to figure out if we say scrap this one, because every time I've said that before, people have gone into conniptions, oh, we can't do that, it's going to cost too much, and they've just freaked out.
Fifty-five to seventy thousand.
Okay, well, that's less than what we were given and less than what this one cost us.
I think, I think the difference is the way that we're looking at replacement costs, like for, you know, replacing things out there. So what I heard in your proposal, Ms. Surly, is that if we stay with the current logo and go through the rebrand, then we would just replace things as things, you know, we needed to replace them, right, as things went out. It wouldn't be that we'd actually, once we complete the branding, that we would go out and just change all the logo stuff. But if we go with the alterations, then that would require us to go and start changing things. And that's, that's the difference in terms of cost, but that's not what you proposed.
What you said, I think that's backwards, because if we use this altered, it's not that different. So you don't need to do, as things need to be replaced. If we go with something brand new, we're going to want to do everything and not do the phasing.
And that's where the two of you are saying something different, you're right.
Yeah.
But that's what Ms. Surly's saying, you said the other, the reverse of that. And so that's what I'm trying to just reconcile, I think, I think what you said is.
When I'm talking about the same cost, I'm talking about the copyright and all that.
Correct.
That there's going to be, that cost is going to be regardless.
Right, that is right.
And then the second question was to go out and get a consultant and do the public input and all that, that cost. I wasn't even addressing the implementation.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, wasn't even addressing that.
So to just do the alterations, I mean, that's just in-house, but it's also the trademark costs that go along with that. That's not going to be fifty-five to seventy thousand dollars?
No, that would be a thousand dollars, around a thousand dollars, and then legal fees as well.
And then doing the full rebrand, mayor, to answer your question directly, would be the fifty-five, seventy. So that's the difference in proposals.
So let me start going around again to see where we need to go. Mr. Mendoza, did I hear you saying, let's start, oh, let me say one more thing.
Mr. Gleason, have a comment?
I'm gonna go, Mr. Gleason next. I want to clarify what Mr. Mendoza said, is that I don't think that a city should keep changing it. I think once you figure out what you need, there's, there's a lot of good in consistency. I'm just not crazy about staying consistent with this, but I, we, we went through several changes, and we change it every five or 10 years, and I don't think that's good either. So if we, if we do one, then I hope that we're gonna stick with it, but of course, that'd be up to future staff, future councils.
And honestly, I think this is the right time to, like Ms. Garza has mentioned, community engagement.
So you wanna go new?
Let's go new.
Oh, there's a lot of community engagement on the other one, but...
I just think that like in the philosophy of graphic designers, I think that they would disagree with what you just said, Mayor, slightly, that a brand, like, the main tenets of a brand usually remain the same, but they also evolve over time. You did say, well, this is since 2010, so I just wanted to, to put that out there.
I think there's value in consistency, and sometimes I think there's value in going with something better. And you know where I've been? I've been ready to just start all over for years. Okay, so you're a start over? And then you've got, I'm gonna go to Mr. Gleason next. Okay, Mr. Gleason.
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion on this. At the beginning of this, I really was for, let's just, let's just try to do something different, or engage with the community, see what they would think, you know, the input, get some input from them to see what they would be interested in. I didn't expect to be able to come up with, I kind of played with it myself too, Mayor, and the changes that were made here are simple, but they're profound. They, the capitalizing of the S and the space between the N and the M, I always felt like it was a run-on sentence before, and it does make a significant difference, just the lowercase a and the capital S and that space in there. And, and as far as, you know, it is a pretty good chunk of money. I mean, we're talking about 50 or 70,000 dollars and maybe some additional costs to, to, to completely, you know, look at something brand new. I'm, I'm, I've gone, kind of gone back and forth during this discussion, so I, I'm okay if my colleagues do want to look at something different, because I was gonna bring up the community engagement part, so I appreciate Ms. Garza. This is a chance for engagement and get people energized about the community and give input. I just worry about the cost of it, and I do agree with the mayor that I think if, even if it did, took, took a year to re-trademark this, the alterations here, that we could use the old, you know, the old shirts and things like that until we phased in those as, as things wear out, and so you don't have those, all those costs upfront. So I, I'm, I'm gonna be okay with the alterations, if that's what everybody wants to do, but if there's a real push from my colleagues to go to the community and get some change, I'm gonna be okay with that, so.
Well, yeah, and, yeah, make no mistake, when I was talking about a new one, I wanted community engagement, even when I said that it could be a contest with our local artists, that would still include the community engagement and let them come up with a graphic representation of perhaps what they heard, like, we've got your program, the permanent art and the other things that, that we have. So let me go back to Mr. Prather. Where are you on, you said you were okay with the alterations. How do you feel about a new one?
Alteration, of course, yeah.
So you'd rather keep, okay. I'll put you as a no on that one. And Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm also, you know, I like to stay with the alterations.
Okay.
I'm gonna be, my stance is either don't mess with it at all, right? For what? It's not aesthetically pleasing either way. Our neighbors don't care about this, right? Like, because we don't like the letters a little bit? Or, like, the only value in spending any money messing with a logo is to involve the community with the goal of a process that is gonna result in like a shared meaning, right? That's, that's my stance. Otherwise, it's like, for what? Nobody cares.
So you are, what's your final?
A total rebrand, or why waste the money? That's not that deep.
I'm with you on that one, okay.
Can I, can I add one more thing?
Yeah, and I was just gonna, and then I'm gonna explain why I despise this one so much.
Okay. One thing I do want to say is that we have, because there has been some concern with this logo for quite some time, we haven't been able to use it as broadly as we, we should be. So I think that that is where a lot of the community, like, like you're saying, doesn't quite know our brand or understand it very well, because we haven't been using it as widely as we should. I'll also say that I've shown the alt, one with alterations to some of my design friends, and they're not thrilled with it. There are a lot of design issues with it, and it's not something that even, I'm talking about the alterations one.
I agree.
It's not something that, that like I truly love, if I can throw out my personal opinion. So, so my recommendation, if I can, could make one, would say, stay with the current logo and provide us the opportunity to truly get out and use it and share the brand with our community and educate the public.
And part of the reason why I don't like it, the main reason, is because, and I hate to use this term, and I hope I don't insult anybody, but to me, it just doesn't look very literate. You've got, you don't capitalize the San Marcos like it should be. The two words are jammed together, so you look at it and go, what is that? And the waterfall isn't clearly an M, or you're not sure that that M, I, I ask people on occasion, and they have no idea that that means waterfall. And so the whole thing is just, the only thing I like about it is that we love your company.
Oh, yeah, that's cute.
Whether, whether it's for tourists or whether it's for economic development, that's really the only part I like, and that's the part we quit using. We don't use it on there anymore. I rarely see that part used on the logo. But to me, it did not, I, I was not proud of, of something that I just thought was not grammatically correct or, or anything else. So it's just been, I've just hated it from the beginning. Okay, let me make sure I've got, Mr. Prather has said no to a new one. Mr. Gleason has said he's interested in looking at it, is that correct? Which means we gotta spend the money to get to that point.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine with looking at it, I guess. I mean, it doesn't mean we have to, that we're gonna like it, you know? I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just back and forth on this, that, oh, I...
Yeah, we're really looking to, Ms. Reyes, isn't the bottom line question here is, are we willing to spend the money to look at something new?
Correct.
That's really what the question is.
Right, we're just wanting to know how much to budget.
Right. So that's, that's the question, Mr. Gleason, is, is if we're gonna decide later, although we gotta come up with something better than this, I mean, I just believe there'd probably be 12 designs that are better than this that we would have options of, so...
Yeah, you could probably make a nicer one on your Microsoft, what is it, your rudimentary Microsoft?
With Tech Box. No, I was just trying to fix this one.
Yeah.
It's all, no, I, I'm not capable of designing a new, a new brand, but I have spent several hours talking about branding lately that wasn't fun. So Mr. Gleason, are we, are you okay with spending the money to, to go ahead and start looking?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so you're still a yes. I'm a yes. Ms. Garza, are you a yes?
Uh, the yes is like to something totally different?
Spend money and start looking.
Yes, I, I trust the comms team to do magic with it.
All right. And, yeah, yeah, y'all manage it and do all that right, okay. And, and we've, we've gotten really, really, really good as a city of community engagement, so I know that we will do that. Okay, so Mr. Mendoza, you're a yes to move forward? And Mr. Gonzalez, you're a no. Mr. Prather, you were a no. And so it looks like we have four people to say yes, move forward.
Full brand.
And then we'll see where complete different.
Full brand, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for the extensive discussion, but this is important, because this, this talks about what, how we feel about our community, and Ms. Garza, you're right, it needs to be something that represents all.
Mayor, you brought a great point. You said all those words, the letters being condensed like that.
Elementary school teachers probably look at the current, that logo with all caps, and they're like, mm-mm, that's not good for literacy.
Well, I, I will tell you, there was some director or something on, I don't remember if it was Ed Sullivan, and it was on the credits, and they wanted their name in all lowercase. And my mother, the sixth grade teacher, says, how am I expected to convince sixth graders or get sixth graders to do things correctly if, you know, if this is what they see, you know? And so, anyway, my, my lowest ACT score was on English, but still. Okay, we've made a decision on that one, so, Mr. Locke, you may continue. Thank you for letting us have that discussion while we were focused on it.
Bring us back something cool.
Yeah. Oh, I have, I'm sure that great and wonderful things are to come. No pressure. Yes.
Okay, there's another special revenue fund that we will cover this evening, and that's the Community Enhancement Fund. And looking at the fiscal year '23 budget and compare that to the estimate, we're looking at the revenues are gonna come in right where we thought that they were going to, and expenses will be a little under. As you can see, we budgeted fiscal year '23 with the intent of using fund balance to cover the operational costs associated in this fund. And the result, what we're estimating is we're just gonna use less of that fund balance. So it looks like we're going to finish around 362,000 of fund balance, which is using about 370,000 of fund balance. We'll begin next year with the 362. With the growth, just from the accounts, that would increase revenue to about 681,000. When we look at what the anticipated expenses will be in fiscal year '24, those will be just under 1.1 million, and there's not enough fund balance now to, to cover the, the difference there. So the end result would be, we're estimating a shortfall in fund balance of a negative 43,000.
How can this be 685 in 2022 and 667 for 2023?
There was a donation made in 2022 of 33,600.
Okay.
And, and that's the difference.
That, now it makes sense, thank you. Well, I, I knew that we, because this is per, I'm gonna say front door, and we don't have fewer front doors than we had the year before, so, okay, all right. Now it's making sense, thank you for that. Is this the one that we got a memo that there was a change?
There, there was a change because it had, remember, like, 969 dollars or something that we were, and, and so it was because of the code compliance officer that was added mid-year wasn't counted.
That's the, the rest of the salary, so this is updated?
So this is updated, yes, and there was an email that went out to y'all.
I'm sorry, that's different from the one that was sent out that I'm looking at. Okay, I get it. This is different, and so, okay. Yes, the one I'm looking at is, is the old one. All right.
So the resource within the fund is 100% the Community Enhancement fee. And as you can tell from that previous slide, a rate adjustment is needed. There's not enough fund balance to continue and to support operations. The cost drivers within this fund are just a compensation study implementation. That cost will be 27,000 for this fund. So this slide provides some options of addressing the shortfall. The estimated shortfall is 405,000. And the first option is to increase the monthly fee by a dollar for both residential and commercial accounts. This would increase the residential fee from a dollar 50 to $2.50, and the total amount of revenue that would generate is 386,000. For the commercial fee, it would increase from 550 to 650, and that would generate 21,000. The sum of those being 408,000, which is just enough to get us over that estimated shortfall. The other option is to cover the shortfall with the general fund. And, you know, from the previous slides, the, where the general fund sits right now for fiscal year '24, there's already about 700,000 that we're gonna have to cut if we can't find additional revenue. Or there could be a combination of the two that, that we could look at. This slide just provides an overview about what the Community Enhancement Fee covers. It covers community enhancement technicians. Those technicians work on graffiti abatement, on illegal signs and dumping, as well as illegal flyers and stickers, and they also help handle the abandoned homeless camps. Keeps San Marcos beautiful. They do things such as adopt a spot, environmental, educational outreach, river cleanups, monthly and special litter cleanups, beautification maintenance and projects, and citywide certifications such as the Bird City, Scenic City, and Bee City. There's the horticultural team. They maintain 90,000 square feet of public beds with two people. They also create pollinator beds, and this supports the mayor's monarch pledge. And there are also certified habitat stewardship program. And the Easter sales, it helps fund the Easter sales, which does roadway litter pickup, maintains medians, downtown sweeping, weekend holiday litter pickup at river parks, mowing neighborhood parks, and extra I-35 mowing. The last thing on there is code enforcement officers. There are two code enforcement officers that are funded from this that address unsafe structures and blight. So that will bring us to the decision points for the special revenue funds.
Okay, so council, let's go ahead and do Community Enhancement next. Ms. Reyes, when did we start paying salaries out of the Community Enhancement fee? We've had it maybe seven, eight years?
Yes. Mr. Carr, do you know exactly what year in which that started?
I will.
It, it, I mean, two or three years, maybe?
It's been longer than that.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was around 2018, 17 or 18, and that's a rough estimate. Mr. Caldwell was here still at the time.
What, that's since the beginning, because it wasn't the, the funded, or the fee established in 2016?
So that's gonna be really close.
Yeah, that may be about right, it's a couple of years after I got on council. So, I, I don't have a real problem with, with adding a dollar to this, although it's almost doubling it, because it's only a buck and a half now, and I think we started, we've raised it at least once since it's been around. I think it was a dollar that we started, and then we went to 50 cents, and all that's not critical to this discussion, but...
Greg, our Director of Neighborhood Enhancement, we went, it was a dollar, it went up a 50 cents to fund the two code officers, and it was 2018 when we started that.
Okay. If we keep paying more and more people out of here, we're not gonna have money to do stuff. So I like the old days when all of this went for stuff, not necessarily one of the stuffs that we did with it, but stuff, and when we paid people out of the general fund, so we had money to do these things. So that's still a concern, and I'm guessing that's not gonna change, but I'm just gonna register that concern. So council, are, do y'all want to address the options on, well, let me back up. I am presuming that, that y'all want to keep doing all of the things that we're doing with this fund, which I'm not suggesting that we change that, although we did put that some dollars aside for unexpected things that come up, which is...
Correct.
Okay, that's good. I don't know if anything's coming out of that, because I think sometimes departments are just covering it with theirs, but it'd be nice that it's here. So I'm, you, you can address that, and then we need to talk about how to, to cover the expected shortfall. So, Mr. Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had a question about Easter seals. How much do we pay them per year for their contract?
The total is quite a bit. For out of Community Enhancement fee, it's around 405,000. It's gone up from 370, just, and just to be clear, it sounds like when there's a shortfall that, what are we doing wrong? Why are we having a shortfall? So we took, everything was general fund, but since we're using Community Enhancement fees, a year ago, we put it in Special Revenue Fund. When it was in the general fund, we took the Community Enhancement fees and then just supplemented... When it was in the general fund, we took the community enhancement fees and then just supplemented. And so now we're just wanting to get your pulse on how we want to do it. Have the fee cover everything or make sure? We do have some employees, but you can't do stuff without, it takes bodies, whether we do it or we contract to do it. So there's going to be bodies. The reason we like our own bodies to do it is we were contracting with a company that would just come in and weed whacked down to the ground, taking out good plants and stuff, or spray weed killer on it. Our two horticulturists that does that 90,000 square feet, it's about half the number of employees that Stormwater uses for about the same amount of square feet, and they do a much more detailed work on it. They're the two hardest. You probably see them all over town, because they're everywhere. So we have that, and then we have the community enhancement techs, which are, our graffiti is going through the roof, so they're spending most of their time just covering up graffiti, which to me is a very important thing to show that your town is
And and an excellent use of community enhancement fee dollars.
Right, and and they're cleaning up illegal dumps and picking up stuff. So I believe we have a good mix of the staff we have. I know that Mr. Mighty does a good job of keeping things under control, since she's taken on the mowing contract for everybody and managing it. We've cut about $300,000 by getting things we shouldn't be mowing and figuring out who should be mowing them. She watches the year, we budget. It's a dry year, so we shouldn't be mowing as many cycles, so she cuts that back. So there's a lot of work into it. It's just, do we want to cover it from the fee? Or do we want to supplement it? That's, we're just trying to get a pulse.
Yeah, because all this came out of general fund until whenever it was that we started this. So we we started asking the community for basically a dollar per front door for residential and for the commercial to help us keep our community looking nice.
Thank you. With the neighborhood changes and enhancements that we're getting with the CIPs, like Buddy Bascals, Sunset Acres, Blackwood Gardens right now that's being worked on, will we see a decrease in the use and need for Easter seals contract once these neighborhood enhancements are completed, like with the alleyways being, I'm sorry, Easter seals? Will we need them?
Yes, and that's something we look at every year, what they're covering. Part of the issue that changed some of this is, so we had CIP projects that were completed that had a two-year maintenance plan with them. And then it was, we had all these projects getting completed, who's going to maintain them? So that's, you know, Ms. Moyer was very instrumental in that. It's, we've got to look, if we build it, we've got to take care of it, and so that raised some prices. It just took tough, complicated.
I have a lot of questions from citizens who ask, what is Easter seals? What are they about? Why do we have them? And thank you for explaining the the need for them. Thank you, sir.
Yes, and there, so we had Easter seals and another contractor that did public facilities. Easter seals can do it much cheaper. You know, we could, we we don't want to get in our own mowing business, because that's equipment and it's seasonal. And so Easter seal's been a very good partner. It's hard for every, every season, they have to go out and get new people, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carr.
Yeah, one of the most important things that, forget who it was, contractor of some type, and I don't remember what we were talking about, might have been downtown, and why they were even speaking, I'm not sure. But they said, how much time and money do you intend to put in on the maintenance of this project? And I don't think we had ever talked about that before, and that was a question. And sometimes we go, because the designers are going to design something grandiose.
Correct.
And it's hard to maintain grandiose. And it's like, and I'll just tell you, it's Socratic median between Rentrade 12 and Wonderworld, that I complained about it at the beginning, and I complained about it all the way along. And Ms. Reyes knows I still complain about it, because it was grandiose, there was too much stuff put in there, and it's stuff too much to maintain, and it's growing out into the street, and it is not something that I'm terribly proud of. So I think that's something that for all future projects, and I know that's not where you are, but I think we learned a a lesson at that point in time, is what can you maintain? And let's go with a smaller scale design, or at least address that whenever we're looking at all the pretty pictures of something about, oh, doesn't this look nice? Well, yeah, but how are we going to maintain it? So so a lot of this, that maintenance is now falling on your shoulders for projects that we're doing.
Correct, and so there needs to be some balance, you're correct, because if you just put in rock to keep it down, that's almost worse because weeds grow up and you can't pull.
Let it be known, I did not say put rock in.
No, no, I'm just saying, so there there needs to be that midpoint from that grandiose to just having nothing. And you have to think about how that impacts that future maintenance. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, I think there's things that can be done that are pretty, that don't go, don't go crazy. Did you have anything else, Mr. Mendoza? Okay, then I'm going to go on to Mr. Gonzalez next.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I I don't think we should be paying employees out of this fee. And I just don't like the the part of getting nickel and dime our residents, a dollar here, 75 cents here, and so on and so on. This is another tax in a sense to me, but I'd rather find the money someplace else.
So you do not want to see this increased?
Right.
Okay, so I'll put you down as a, as a, I know, and now that for residential, what about for businesses?
I'm okay for businesses, I'm just not okay for the residential. I want that to stay the same.
Okay.
So one of the items we did to, so we had the number of businesses we have and the number of residential, you do the multiplication. There are so few of the commercial in it that to make up the difference, you'd have to charge them 30 bucks, you know. And what really hits me, Mr. Mighty said, is remember, a lot of those are mom and pop businesses, so you're double tapping them. So that's why we just went with the dollar across the board, because we couldn't make it up just on the commercial. And we've tried 75 cents here, three dol-
And I'm not saying for them to make it up, I'm saying that we should find other ways that we can get those funds from them. And of course, I don't want to see them, theirs to go up as well, but.
One thing about this, Mr. Gonzalez, that you may recall, is that when I say front door, that's not just single-family houses, that's every apartment front door. That's why I'm using the term front door instead of house. So that was one of the things that I appreciated that that we did, because people who live in apartments want to live in a lovely city, too. I do believe.
And we have a lot of apartments.
Yes, and that was, that's a lot of front doors.
Can we have it where it's just a B apartment complex, not residential homes?
I, I, maybe, but I could not in good conscience go with that.
It's just, I know so many people that, and I sing this song all the time, they just can't afford it. A dollar doesn't seem like much, but they had to.
Okay, so I've got you down as as a no. Are you still a yes on on the businesses?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Garza, your hands up next.
I think generally I have been very content with the work that is being done with this fee, just like in passing or in like the homelessness coalition, and just like seeing the, yeah, the work being done. So I hear you on needing to increase it. And I also appreciate that you guys are being considerate of like, you know, if we increase it for small businesses, it would hit, I mean, commercial hit a lot of small businesses. I would appreciate it having those numbers. That would help me make sense of it, because at the end of the day, regardless of whether they're small businesses or not, they're, those are two separate, they're very different entities. When we talk about equity, like a family, just like residential folks is different from business. I'm wondering if there could be like a a combination of increasing the commercial and then maybe for the, like not messing with the residential and then taking that from the general.
Just the numbers wouldn't.
Let let me ask a question. Is the mom and pop produce stand a business, and Amazon is a business, are they paying the same thing?
That's a great question, Mayor.
They're paying the same thing.
Is that like a legal thing? Is it like a, or is it, like, are there parameters that we have to follow?
It comes from the utility accounts, so, I mean, if you had a, Amazon had several utility accounts, they're paying more than once, but not in equal.
But still, it's not in any way.
But that, I guess my question is like, is there anything preventing us from doing a deeper dive and seeing like, if we could shake down bigger corporations?
Another way of of funding, I'm all for that.
I'm just saying, very different from my favorite restaurant downtown and the, and everything they give to our community and da-da-da-da-da, and a large corporation that got lots of cheddar. Don't come for me, Amazon.
Yeah, and I was just using Amazon, because that just came up at the top of my head.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You you guys asked for some different numbers, and and so I pulled up a spreadsheet that Mr. Mighty's and Mr. Carr did. Of course, it doesn't have all the possible options, but just as an example, increasing commercial by $2, so the total rate would be 750 for commercial, nets us an additional $43,000. Doesn't go very far towards helping this.
But if we had more equity in that, and we didn't raise it on the small folks, but it's like the drainage fee.
Right.
That there's at least three layers of drainage fee, and then there's the commercial drainage fee. I think that's what we need to look at here. Ms. Reyes, for that dollar amount, or Mr. Locke, what is the, how many pennies on the tax rate? Would we need to raise that same amount of money? I, I, we we used to always know, yeah, a penny on the tax rate raises
800,000.
800,000, so that's a half cent on the tax rate. So, yeah, thank you. It used to be 100,000.
And that's something we thought about, too, is a dollar, and I totally agree that a dollar counts. But a dollar's a dollar versus a half cent on whatever the value is, there may be a big, bigger hit. And it gets down to, do we want these services? Because if we can't afford them, you know, if we're up against police, fire, and other stuff, and we're already short.
Right, where do we get it?
You know, do we cut, that's, do we cut services? It kind of comes down to.
But we're not saying we're going to cut all the services. We're going to go back and see what's most important.
Yeah, but I feel like that's like unfair a little bit. I don't know, like.
The services that they provide are excellent, and there's a lot of things that we are doing that we, that we didn't do in the past.
I can just say from the alleys alone, the work that's done in the bowl neighborhoods that we have, a lot of these neighborhoods don't have alley access. So this is beneficial, because all these neighborhoods also have senior citizens that don't have the ability to go out there in 115 degree weather and do this. So I think that it is a, neighborhood enhancement, it's Sematiko's.
No, it's community enhancement.
I'm sorry, community enhancement, it's, it's, we're enhancing the beauty of Sematiko's, we're maintaining.
Yeah, but yet we still, we still in our sidewalks have, we still have weeds growing in the sidewalks, which I'm not saying y'all need to go pull those weeds, but there's there's still things that are keeping our community from looking A-plus that I'm not asking you to address it, but they're still there.
Right.
That it's just the nature of the beast.
I think they do a wonderful job, and like, obviously, being aesthetically pleasing is important to everybody, but in terms of the, how it intersects with safety, right? Like how your community is perceived, and just other stuff that I was reading on the packet that we got for fiscal year 2023 that you guys do. So I just wanted to highlight that, that it's not just like beautification. We want it like, we want to make it cute.
Well, beautification is one, but keeping, keeping all this stuff mowed is is critical to health and safety. So, yeah, it's it's a range. It's not all beautification. Yes, sir.
I think we're all in agreement, the need for the service. I think it's the, where we get the revenue from that makes us uncomfortable, a dollar per door. Is there a way that we could charge more than a dollar per door for the larger doors, particularly like the warehouses?
That's what I've, I'm going to go around on that, too, because I think that's where we need to address this and not the residential.
Yeah, even the the mom and pop of the smaller restaurants, you know, is there a way we can, a fraction of a cent per, you know, utility usage, water usage, or whatever, and that goes into the community enhancement fee? So some of our larger businesses, larger warehouses, things like that, can share this burden versus a widower on fixed income, social security only gets $1,000 a month, you know, that $1 is.
And $12 a year, and, yeah. That that's why I I wanted to make the point of this is half cent on the tax rate, because you were talking about, how can we find another way to do it? That's probably not where we want to go.
But something like a fraction of a penny on our sewer, water, race water, or whatever, for commercial accounts, or something like that.
So we we know the size of lots, because that's what we use for our drainage. We know what electric utility usage they have. Is there any way that we can come up with something, you know, we can't go ask these businesses, what, how much profit did you have last year? But is there some way that we can, and we're not going to solve it here, but is that something that y'all could look at and get back with us?
I think we can get back and look at, the the thing that's going through my mind right now is how doable it is to come up with an entirely new rate structure.
In the next six weeks?
Yes, so so I think that's kind of where my struggle is a little bit, is just that I don't know that that is real doable, because those things weren't very, you know, methodically set up, and so I want to make sure.
So was the drainage fee.
Yes, ma'am, so that's why I just really want to make sure that that there's enough time to do it in the right way. And and so I hear you, and I think that those are great discussions and great direction. It's just that we have this bleed that we need to stop, and so we need to figure out a stopgap and then have that as kind of the the next step, you know, is looking at that more sustainable rate structure that would be the, you know, building the bigger doors a little bit more than the smaller doors.
Yeah.
And Mayor, if I could add, one thing you have to keep in mind is when you set a rate structure, there has to be a nexus to the service provided. And so in terms of the drainage utility, it's the impervious cover, more, more runoff, even though everyone has to detain. So that's what you have to think about in terms of a large business. You know, what what nexus is it that they are creating more need for community enhancement versus just a single residence? And and that's just part of the standard.
It's part of the justification is what what we do. But I I think the number of employees, which we can't go get that from everybody. But we're not going to solve that here. But how many of, oh, Mr. Gleason, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate the conversation, the kind of thinking out of the box of how we can do this without impacting people on fixed incomes. Look, the community enhancement dollars, I think, are well spent. I think we all kind of agree on that. And there's additional pressures on them with all the additional things we have with growth, right? And and, you know, I I know it is, it is a dollar on everyone. And, you know, I I get back to, maybe we look at, we've got, we have some additional general fund dollars. Is that what we do some of this with? I mean, you know, I mean, that's one of the things on there, either partially or fully, I mean, from additional general funds. I mean, I I know we're trying to set aside some things and do some CIP projects and some other things, but this is the nuts and bolts of daily, daily requirements on staff. And so I'm kind of leaning that direction at this point.
So you're saying general fund?
Maybe, and and can I get a clarification exactly what that dollar amount shortfall was? Was it, was it 400,000? Is that what I heard?
Which.
370, so just.
Which is 300 and, how much, isn't it close to 400,000?
And round numbers is 400, isn't it?
So, and how many firefighters is that?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, that's the, that's what it comes down to, is because then.
Oh, yeah, if we move these employees into general fund, then that causes a whole situation there, and there's, there's less than.
Yes.
Well, we were discussing, we were discussing looking at some potential adjustments in the rate structure, and I appreciate Ms. Moyer's kind of clarification on some things. I do think this is a discussion that if we, if we decided to come up with something, or staff comes up with something, we're not going to do that in the next six weeks. We're talking about 2024, and I know that's, and it's, and it's, it would almost be a one-time if we, you know, I wish we'd had this discussion on on this a couple of months ago, right? Like, we might have been able to come, potentially come up with something, a different solution that we're not going to find now. Like, we need to find the money, or this is going to be lacking. And I know, and and it is a safety issue, all right? There there is a lot of safety issues involved with it.
and, and it is a safety issue, all right, there, there is a lot of safety issues involved with this. And so, I mean.
Is there a way to do what you're, like, both, like, is there a way to address the, the bleeding while simultaneously making a commitment to our neighbors that we're going to be looking into a more equitable rate structure?
And, and that's kind of what I was getting at, Ms. Garza, too.
Yeah, a little two for one.
I could get on board, like, place holding some money from general fund to, you know, fund this necessary stuff, but like, let's start getting creative with other ways we can charge our bigger rate, rate consumers for this kind of service.
The only thing is, is, so, Mr. Locke, help me with this, is that because of the type of money, this is more recurring expenses, it's not going to be one-time expenses. So when we talk about where we take it from, it is the personnel. I mean, it's because, because this is.
It's the personnel, or it's one-time capital outlay, or there's other?
No, that, that's the thing.
Oh, let me back up, what I'm looking at is figuring out for FY25, how we can do something with the commercial to solve this. And the Band-Aid for FY24 is to look at the additional sales tax money or, or something.
But that's my point, is that money is going right now to recommend to you additional personnel that we're adding to the budget.
Not the five million dollars.
Not the five, because that's, that's one-time money.
Well, this would be one-time money.
Yeah, I, I think that's what the mayor is suggesting in this instance, is just to cover the shortfall with the one-time money for FY24.
This year, while we figure out something that we can do for, for FY25, to buy y'all another year plus, fifteen months.
Which is, which is how we are operating this year, this year we're operating off of fund balance. It would be a similar setup for next year, only part of that would probably have to come from the, a general fund one-time source.
Is there a 25% fund balance required for this fund?
No, no, ma'am.
No, that's, that was going to bring my, be my next question, is that if we're doing that, and y'all want us to do something, then that's also going to be a consideration if you're wanting us to look at a fund balance for this fund, because right now, that, that isn't the case either.
Yeah, that's tough. My, my concern is that we're just going to be like, we need to address the bleed, and then it's like, like, not ever addressing the, the rate structure, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and y'all have looked at everything already, it looks like y'all are continually looking at how you can save a buck or two here and there, and yonder is what it sounds like. But you're already, there, there's really not much less. And just so y'all know, this mayor's monarch pledge, that's a national thing, that wasn't something I initiated. I agree with it, but.
We love the butterflies.
Yeah.
I think we can look at the.
It wasn't my idea, it was a good one, but I can't take credit for it. So there doesn't look like there's going to be four hundred thousand dollars to find to reduce, unless we just cut out a bunch of services that we have come to know and love, is that correct?
Yes, if we don't fund it somehow, yes.
Well, I was looking at what, is there anything that we could stop doing? And I, and you, I don't want to ask you to do that now, but can we get y'all to, let, let me go around the table and find out exactly where council is, and we're not going to solve this here this evening, I don't think, if we're not willing to do. So let me make sure, let me find out, Mr. Prather, where are you on, and I'm going to say for, for this year, that residential and the commercial, and you can give me different answers of the dollar increase?
I don't want to add another dollar fee to our, our residents, but I'd be interested in commercial and.
And for a different way of doing commercial, I should have said I have three questions. You're, you're good with that. All right, Mr. Gleason, the three questions, adding a dollar for residential, a dollar for commercial, and looking at some kind of quantum change on the commercial.
Definitely looking at potentially something change in commercial.
Got it.
I'm not for the dollar right now yet, and, and partially because we don't know exactly what we're going to be dealing with from the legislature.
Okay, and, and the dollar, there's, there's two questions on the dollar, there's residential and commercial, so I need two answers, but they can be the same answer.
I'm fine for the commercial increase for now, and I know it's only going to give them about 10% of what they need, but it's something.
Okay, that, that's what I need to know, okay.
And then on the other dollar, holding off, and, and partially again, bringing it up, but until we have what the legislature is going to do yet, we don't, we don't know what impacts that's going to have on property taxes.
Okay. Mr. Mendoza, the three questions?
I'm okay with all three.
You're okay with all three? Yes, yes, uh, let's see, Mr. Scott's not here, Ms. Garza.
You're, okay, repeat your questions?
Dollar for, on the residential, that's one question, dollar on the commercial is another question, willing to look at some sort of quantum change on the commercial.
Yes, I think also, I don't know, maybe for next time or whatever, like, I'm struggling to understand the budgetary implications of covering the shortfall in full or parcy with a general fund, I think.
I haven't asked that question yet, that's another one I got to go around with. I should have done it with this one, but I didn't, so I'm going to go around on that one. So residential dollar is, no, okay, resident, I'm sorry, the dollar on commercial, current?
Uh, the.
And then the next question is the big change to commercial. But what about the dollar for now?
For now?
For on commercial?
Increasing it.
You're, yes, okay. And I'm going to be a.
Mayor, can I jump in just to clarify?
You can.
Increasing the commercial on the higher users, not.
That's the quantum change on the commercial that we'll try to figure out what we're doing, so that the mom and pop, front, one front door, small, isn't paying the same as Amazon and other largely and wonderfully successful businesses, and we're grateful that they're here.
Very grateful that they're here, and we get to tell our residents that this is economic development brings tax revenue to help provide services for our community.
We are giving them the opportunity to help improve our community.
And participate, yes.
We basically, it was either this or a half a cent property tax raise.
Okay, so now I need to go back, and unfortunately, that's where my page break fell. And I'm going to ask you two, two more questions. One is, do we want to look towards, but not necessarily implement this year, same question as the fund balance for the hotel, do we want to at some point establish a fund balance because there are employees paid out of this fund? Do we want to establish a fund balance for the community enhancement fee? And the second one is, if we don't come up with something for this year, do, are we okay with dipping into the general fund, which shorts others? Dipping into the general fund in order to come up with the shortfall? I'll start with you, Mr. Prather, two questions. Create, create, create a fund balance, and are, and looking into the general fund to cover the shortfall?
Yes.
You're yes and yes, okay, Mr. Gleason?
I'm a yes and yes, Mayor.
All righty. Ms. Gonzalez?
A yes and a yes.
All righty. Ms. Mendoza?
I'm yes on the first question, but I have hesitations on taking money out of the general fund right now because we've got it reserved for other things that we, we have in mind. But if I have no choice, then yes, ma'am, well, I have to supplement the general fund.
Yeah, I don't see that they're going to be able to cut four hundred thousand dollars out of what they're doing, because it's.
Not if we don't increase it.
That's, no, okay.
And, and Mayor, and Mayor, let's clarify, too, that if we do raise the commercial, that's going to be about forty thousand, so we're looking at about three hundred and thirty thousand coming from the general.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to see that either, but, okay, I, I'll go ahead and jump in. I'm a yes on the fund balance for community enhancement, and that general fund, that's hard because then that's going to take money away from other things that are already set and expected. Ms. Garza?
Um, uh, I'm a yes on considering taking it from the general fund. I think that's the second question, what was the first one?
Uh, establishing a fund balance for this one also, in the future, which may be twenty-five or twenty-six even, so just move towards that, so we have consistency.
Right, and, and I get, I guess in the future, where you guys will kind of like give us a summary how it like directly impacts the general fund, or like what all, we would have to, we'd have to decide what to pull, right?
Yeah, they'll come up with recommendations.
Kind of.
I'm still, I'm still kind of.
What it's going to mean is basically like not recommending some things to you when we come back in August.
Oh, gotcha, right.
We have to go back and rethink some of that five million.
Right.
Okay.
No, yeah, I'm still down for that, I think the work being done by the folks that mess with this fund is really good, they're really good with their outreach, and it contributes to safety, so I, I view it as equal as the other ones, so, that's tough, though.
Okay, and now.
And I want to clarify, and I want to clarify one more thing, too, Mayor, my, my decision, my, my, my input might change a little bit depending on what the legislature does.
Well, that's understood throughout everything, Mr. Gleason, you, you brought that up several times, and you're absolutely right, but, but that's an underlying thing that Ms. Reyes addressed in the beginning. But you're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Um, let's go back to the first two decision points, and that is budgeting the hotel tax revenues with the increase of 3% over, as staff has recommended. I'm looking for yeses or thumbs up, Mr. Gleason's giving me a thumbs up, Mr. Prather's a thumbs up, Mr. Gonzalez is a thumbs up. This is what staff has recommended based on trends. Okay, so Ms. Mendoza's a yes, I'm a yes, Ms. Garza?
Sure.
Okay. And approve hotel tax supplemental requests based on available capacity.
Yes, and, and the supplemental requests were included in the fiscal year 24 preliminary budget, so there is capacity to approve those.
Okay, so we, so we can afford that?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we tap hotel tax for any community enhan?
I say let's look.
I ain't putting heads in beds, but.
If it brings people and invites people to our community.
It makes our community more, more inviting.
That's true.
But are y'all okay with the second one there that Mr. Locke is telling us is already, those are dollars are available? I see a yes from Mr. Mendoza, yes from Mr. Prather, yes from Mr. Gleason, yes from Mr. Gonzalez, I'm a yes, Ms. Garza?
Sure.
Okay, she's a sure, write that down, all right. Have we completed this one, I believe we have?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll ask the people who, in the audience who are keeping track, are we, are we through with this section? Okay, in which case, Mr. Locke? Does anybody want to take a break, or do we want to press on with the last few slides? Estimate of how long your presentation will be, I'm not going to ask you to estimate how long we're going to sit here and talk about it.
We are on slide forty-two, and I, and I believe there's only, there's about ten more slides.
Ten more slides?
Yeah, what do you think, Council?
Let's push.
All right, press it on, please, continue, Mr. Locke.
I'm going to go potty at some point.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the last section is to go over our enterprise funds, and the first enterprise fund that we're going to go over is the largest one, the electric utility. Looking at the, our estimate for fiscal year 23 and comparing that to what was budgeted for 23, right now, the estimated revenues are looking like they may come in just a little bit short of what was budgeted. It's, it's within about five hundred thousand dollars. On the expense side, it looks like that we're going to be well under the budgeted expenses, spending around sixty-six million with the budget being sixty-seven point four. So altogether, we would be adding to our, our fund balance, bringing in more revenue than expense on the year, or I, my apologies, doing better than what we were budgeting. We had planned use of fund balance for the one-time expense, as you can see, there was four two, four point two million dollars of one-time capital costs included in the budget. Looking at our fiscal year 24 budget, our revenues will increase to cover the expenses. So the total expenses are going to increase from sixty-six million to seventy-three million, and we have a slide that is outlining exactly what those big expense increases are. And we're estimating to finish right about the same point, you know, at the thirteen million dollar fund balance, which is sixty-five days cash on hand. The electric fund has, currently, it's a sixty-day cash on hand with a goal of moving to ninety. So looking at the revenue assumptions, the electric services is, makes up the largest component, ninety-four percent of the total revenue, and right now, looking at the electric fund, a rate adjustment will be needed. We are working with the, and the rate model, and that information will be shared with the Citizens Utility Advisory Board on July eleventh, and they'll make a recommendation to city council on, on a rate adjustment. Transfers make up three and a half percent of the total revenue in this fund. These transfers are from other utility funds, and it's for the cost allocation of utility billing. Utility billing is paid for out of the electric fund, and utility billing also collects for, for instance, the water wastewater fund, so the water wastewater fund has to reimburse for its proportionate share of utility billing. Other revenue make up two and a half percent of the total revenue, and this includes the Ferguson revenue, pole attachment and line maintenance, and interest income. So now looking at the major cost increases in the electric utility. The first being personnel, covering personnel, the compensation study implementation will be five hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the electric utility fund. There's one new position requested, which is a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Looking at the operating spends, which this is really where the, the biggest expense increase is, the power cost, which is what we receive from the Lower Colorado River Authority, will increase five point three million dollars, so that's really what is driving that budget up. And the power cost for transmission will increase two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. There are one-time costs included for regular vehicle replacement for equipment that the utility already owns, there's two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and for new, new vehicle requests is six, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. On debt service is another component, for the certificates of obligation that are being issued for 23 to cover those large capital projects in the electric fund, the estimated amount of debt service that'll come online next fiscal year is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So those make up all of the big cost drivers that, for the reason you saw the increase in expenses. Moving on to the water wastewater utility, looking, comparing the FY23 revenue estimate at fifty-six point eight million, which is shorter than the fifty-seven point eight million that was originally budgeted. This was originally, this year started off as being a wet year, and now we're kind of moving into a drier year, so we'll have to see how, how things work out, if it stays dry and warm. Of course, now we're entering into a, a new water conservation mode, so that, that will cut down on some of that revenue that we may otherwise have recognized during, during this timeframe. On the expense side, we are estimated to only spend fifty-six point two million of our fifty-eight point five million dollar budget. So from an operational perspective, we will fare better than how we budgeted from the spending less money. We're looking at ending the year with twenty-three point two million dollars, and, which is a hundred and fifty-four days of cash on hand, so they're already at that ninety days cash on hand, so they'll have some money that will be able to be moved into their capital projects account to fund some of those larger capital projects for water wastewater. Looking at the preliminary 2024, the total revenues will be sixty-two point six million, which is an increase, and it's increased to cover the increase in expenses. The expense budget, as you can see, is fifty-six point, will increase from fifty-six to sixty-two million dollars. And there's a slide following that will outline all of those major expense increases. So the, the major revenue source in the water wastewater fund is the, our wastewater services, the, the user fees that are charged for the use of water, that makes up ninety-one percent of the revenue, and there will be a rate adjustment needed in this fund to cover the increase of expenses. The other revenue sources make up. The other revenue sources make up 9%, and those come from sources such as the wholesale water sales, the reuse sales, the sewer surcharges, and interest income.
So, Mr. Locke, you've got rate adjustment will be needed, but when I look at this and, uh, for the other, the, the revenues are somewhat over the expenses, which is great. So have you already calculated a rate increase into the revenue side of the slide that was right before this one?
Yes, ma'am. Um, since, since, uh, we are still in the process of working with the rate model to determine what rate adjustment will be needed, it was, the revenues are essentially just set at the same point, at the same level of the expenses, knowing that in order to cover the expenses, the revenues will have to increase. So this would include a rate adjustment.
Okay, so, so somewhere we know what that delta is, correct? What we need that rate adjustment to cover? The question is just gonna be, how is it allocated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that information will, um, on, at that July 11th meeting with the Citizens Utility Advisory Board, that information will be shared with that board, and they will, they will ultimately make a recommendation to City Council.
Okay, thank you.
So let's look at some of the, the major cost increases in this fund that is driving up those expenses. First is, we'll cover personnel. The implementation of the compensation study is $501,000, and there are three new positions being requested in, in the fund, and that's also $501,000. Looking at the operating expenses, the largest increase is the Alliance Regional Water Authority contract. The plant will be coming online in the November time period, and with that, the city will have to start paying its share of the operation and maintenance piece of that plant, so that's why there's the increase, the $1.4 million. Uh, there's a surface water treatment plant contract that will increase $233,000. The Canyon Regional Water Authority contract, $175,000, and the wastewater treatment plant contract, $170,000. Looking at the one-time expenses, there are six vehicles and, uh, equipment requests at $1.9 million, and six other equipment and infrastructure at $1.6 million. And these are one-time requests, and, and we saw that they certainly have the fund balance to be able to pay for that. The next fund is stormwater. Um, we're estimating that the, to come in right about at the revenues, at $8.8 million, so saying that was budgeted. On the expense side, we're estimated to do about the same thing, maybe a, a little bit shorter, coming in at $8.8 million, and there was an $8.9 million budget. So we would finish the year with a $1.8 million, um, fund balance, and that's a 78 days cash on hand. The stormwater, um, has a similar goal of trying to get to that 90 days cash on hand, so they are showing some improvement. They're at 78 days. Looking at the preliminary budget, the revenues for FY '24 is $9.2 million. This does not include any kind of fee adjustment. This is just from growth of accounts. And on the expense side, uh, the expenses are estimated at $9 million. In this particular fund, we're not estimating the need for a, uh, for a rate adjustment, and, and part of that's to do with the decision that City Council made to cover the capital improvement projects with the general fund that is providing some relief to the stormwater fund. So nearly all of the revenues in stormwater come from the stormwater fees, 99%. As we touched on, no rate adjustment will be needed, and the other revenues that just make 1% is really penalties and interest income. The major cost drivers in this fund is the compensation study implementation, that's $111,000. And there's one, uh, position that is included at $114,000. The last enterprise fund that we're going to discuss is the resource recovery. And we're estimating that revenues will come in at $6.9 million. The total budget was about $7.1 million. On the expense side, we're estimating to spend less than the budget, estimating 7.1, with total budget being 7.3. So we would finish fiscal year '23 with a $2.2 million fund balance. And for fiscal year '24, currently, the revenues are being estimated at $7 million, and the expenses at about $7 million. This is a, one of those funds that we're still looking into. We, we haven't received all of the, the contractual information to know exactly where the final expenses will be. As it sits right now, it doesn't look like this fund needs to have a rate adjustment, and as we receive more information, we'll know more. We just don't have everything, um, as it relates to this particular fund yet. So the, uh, the major revenue sources in resource recovery, 66% is in solid waste collection. Uh, 28% is recycling, and 6% is, uh, just from other sources, such as penalties, surcharges for solid waste, and interest income. The two major cost drivers are personnel. The compensation study implementation is $47,000 for this fund. And the, for operating, the solid waste residential contract is estimated to be a $200,000 increase. Uh, so looking at all of the supplemental requests in the enterprise funds, and, and I, I noticed when I was going through this today that, um, I'll have to make a couple corrections as I walk through this, and it's all within the stormwater fund. If you look at the personnel request, it shows that there was three for water wastewater, three for stormwater, one for electric. There's actually only one for stormwater that, that was adjusted. Of those three positions, there was one position that added mid-year, and there was a position that, um, the, when it went through the city manager's office that they removed, so there's actually only one that is being included. Yes, ma'am. Um, so that changed, the total personnel requests in the enterprise funds are five, and the total amount is $724,000. That's across all the enterprise funds. Um, look at the new capital requests, there's a total of 15 at $6.4 million, with the bulk of that being in the water wastewater fund. And that would give, will get us to the enterprise fund decision points.
Okay. Questions, comments on what we've seen already before I ask, and these are the questions that will be coming. Okay, um, and so this next one, um, I'm going to assume, but I'll hear from each of you, that we will look at the rate adjustments that are coming back from the Citizen Advisory Board. I'm not asking you at this point for a commitment as to where we're gonna go, cause we haven't seen them yet. So is everybody good with those coming back for us? So, okay, right, all right, everybody's good with that? Um, squeezing thumbs up, all right, so we're good with that? Did you need any more from us on that particular one than that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and so next is the approve the supplemental requests. Are those the ones that we just saw that are already built into the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
For which a rate increase will be needed?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Those for which a rate increase will be needed.
Yeah, as it relates to the electric utility, water wastewater, um, we do know that a, a rate adjustment will be needed in those funds.
But we're gonna make a decision on whether or not those rate adjustments get done, so I am hesitant myself to say yes on this one if it's based on a decision about a rate adjustment that we haven't made yet. So I think this question needs to be answered after we make a decision, after the rate adjustments. I, I assume y'all have vetted them. I'm, I'm sure I'm fine with, you know, the list, but it's whether or not we can afford it, and I know y'all have already pared things down from...
I'm fine with that.
What was asked. So are y'all good with, we'll, we'll wait for the rate adjustments and then, because that will drive this, and, okay.
Yes.
So we, we will wait. Um, anything else? Oh, and that, those decisions on the rate adjustments will be in August, September?
Uh, August.
August.
Second meeting, maybe? Okay. All right, so we'll see this when we do the final budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All righty. Anything else on these enterprise funds that Mr. Locke just covered? Ms. Prather?
I don't know if this is the point to bring this up, but, uh, because Sam Arco's one of the few cities in Texas that own our own utilities, if there's features that we could help enhance that can help our citizens save money, you know, for example, with the smart meters, we get the previous day electrical and water usage, and then we have the email, uh, alert for if you go over certain water usage, you can get an email alert. I was seeing, um, can we enhance those features where we can get real-time, same-day electrical usage, if possible, through an app or something, or the, the citizens can empower them to help save them money with their utilities? I, I, I think we've had this discussion before, and we're looking at that, but I just wanted to see if we can enhance that or start porting money to make these, you know, things happen. And then, um, instead of the email feature for water, especially cause now we're, see that we're going into significant drought, can we also, uh, make that a, a text feature as well when you get a runny toilet or something, or the 150 gallons?
You can get a phone call.
Well, you get an email if thought.
You can get a phone call, cause I have, and I didn't even know I'd signed up for it, but thank goodness I did.
But it's, I, I know we're doing those things, but can we start enhancing them?
Sure. Tyler Yorth, Director of Utilities, let me split that, uh, answer into a couple pieces. The first one is, uh, directly for the electric. We are looking at, um, when we can tee up things like time of use rates, or, uh, you know, the 15-minute increment notifications and those kinds of things. We needed to finish our AMI upgrade before we could do those, and, and what we committed to you, as we finished that project, was to say we needed to collect a year's worth of data so we could go in and do the analysis and see whether those things worked here. All right, so there's other folks that, uh, use those kinds of rates, um, that, you know, people with smartphones and, and apps and, and dialed into the system can leverage that, uh, but for us to be able to set those rates or those incentives, we didn't have enough of that very detailed 15-minute information on all the meters across the city, and we didn't have that until we got through with the AMI system, which we're almost at the end of. So we're probably a year away on that one from being able to, we're not a year away from being able to provide the information, but in terms of being able to provide other things or incentive programs or different rate structures around that, we're probably a year away, away from, before we can start the analysis. But it's on the books, and so it's, it's in the front of our minds, and we'll move that direction. The water side's a little harder just because of the way the meter works and the information you can get by, uh, but like you said, you can sign up for, uh, you know, some different options that are out there that'll help with that, too.
On the telephone notification, is there a... Do y'all determine at what point you call us, or can we set what that...
You can set it, but they'll email you.
No, I got a phone call. When, when a faucet blew off, um, at a faucet that Terry was using that wasn't close enough to the house that I knew about it, and I got a phone call. Yeah, and thank goodness, cause that thing had been running wide open for like three days, and I had no idea. So that was a wonderful thing.
Yeah, you, you can set your alert thresholds.
I want to see if we can enhance that, where texts, and, but the reason why I'm asking is this enhancement, is this like, you know, something that we already have the budget for, or is this like you're gonna come back and like, hey, you know, to have an app feature or something like that, that's like a $300,000 project?
We'll take a look at that. I, 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 I really would struggle to think that it's gonna have any kind of price tag like that on it. It's gonna be more a question of, is, is it available within the software packages that we have today? And if it is, then it's, uh, do we have the field, uh, devices that get you the information real-time enough to make that valuable to you? How do we get that out to you so you can set it up, set up your thresholds, those kinds of things? So we'll ta, we'll take a look at that one, but I, I'm, I'm with the mayor on this one. I'm pretty sure you can go in and do that. So then the question is whether or not we can advance that from...
Enhance it, yes.
Yeah, right, from southwestern bell, uh, to a text message.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll go get the answer to that for you.
Or just have it call your cell phone.
But the smart meters, that was like the hardware, but like now let's see if we can fine-tune the software.
Right.
I just wanted to bring that up.
I'm okay with a phone call.
It's a way for...
A text would be great, but a phone call is really handy.
The more data you empower your citizens and utility providers that can, you know, go on their smart thermostat, oh, you know, I'm gonna put it from 76 to 78, or whatever it may be, you know, all these little things that, the technology's currently there. We just gotta, you know...
And I highly recommend using the smart thermostats. I've been using one since, I don't know, ever invented, and it has made a huge difference where, you know, you set your thermostat to, for me, by myself, if I'm gone, now I don't need the air running at a lower temperature.
You know, older homes, runny toilets, and you know, you know, we just don't wanna wastewater, we wanna help conserve these things, but we also wanna help the bottom line of our, our residents, and there's ways we can do it if we just enhance what we currently have.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just to refresh my memory, we bought some water rights either from Clarissa Spring, uh, Springs or someplace toward the valley.
Actually, Mr. Yorth can, it's the Clarissa Wilcox, and it's not towards the valley, it's over and towards Gonzalez, and that's the Alliance Water Project, so you're heading down the right path.
It's okay. We're on the same page, different books, same page. It's okay. My question is, when are we gonna reap the benefits from that water that we're supposed to get and resell, and we're, we're gonna be able to help our residents with their not-so-high water bills?
Tyler Yorth, Director of Utilities, um, there's, um, two ways to, to, to look at that. The first one is, we have already spent, um, almost $117 million to acquire the Clarissa Aquifer Water through Alliance Regional Water Authority. We will receive our first gallons of water from that project, uh, at the end of this calendar year.
Oh, wow.
So we're currently on schedule to actually receive water, uh, after, what, Mayor, nearly 20 years of working on that project, and we'll receive that water, um, this year. And then the, the second part of your, your question then is, is, um, you know, what's the benefit to that? Well, uh, you know, the benefit to that is, uh, you know, we're gonna have the fresh water supply. We'll look at that, and we are, um, always, uh, talking to our neighbors, our neighboring water companies. We brought to you a County Line Special Utility District Water Sharing Agreement about six months ago, where we sold water to them for two years to bridge a need they have, but because we had excess water underneath our capacity needs, and so we're always looking at those opportunities. And the more water supply we have available, uh, the more we'll be able to continue with those. So I think it was March that we actually passed that resolution on the water sharing agreement, brought it to you first time, probably December. And there, we're actually going to, uh, we'll send out our first invoice to them at the end of this month. The contract was effective July 1st, so we're already leveraging, uh, our excess water today. And, uh, you know, the extent that we can do that and make sure we keep a safe operating margin for our other water supplies, for example, when we're cut back on Edwards Aquifer usage like we are now, uh, then we'll, we'll, we'll take advantage of those and, and bring those water sharing agreements for y'all to approve.
Were those, uh, the profit you're gonna make on that, was that considered on this, uh, the budget for all this?
Well, just remember, there's expense to acquiring that water, and the important part of the Alliance Water, previously the Hayes-Cobble Public Utility Agency, is that we're going to have water. It's, it wasn't to make it cheaper, because there's a, a cost to acquire that water, it's that we are going to have access to water. Additional water.
I thought we'd been paying that cost.
Right.
We, so we started, um, paying on the debt service for that investment into, uh, what we consider a 50-year water supply plan for the city, right? And so we have been paying into that for a couple of years. We'll start receiving that water. We'll blend that water in with our other, uh, sources. We're actually working with a consultant, uh, this summer to help us establish a water usage plan that optimizes the different rates involved with each of our water sources and when we can use them and how, so we'll optimize that with our surface water plant and our ARWA plant. And, uh, so that'll be a cost savings right off the bat, the fact that we have, uh, different opportunities there. Some take or pay, some, you know, pay-as-you-go kind of things, and so we're working that into an operations plan that will work with our, uh, operating departments that'll save us... that'll save us water there. But in terms of the fact that once the water comes on, you've already made that investment, right? You're already paying that debt service and until that debt service goes away, that is what it is. So we will pick up operating costs. Mr. Locke showed you that, there was $1.6 million increase in our ARWA costs this year, which is our share of operating the plant. So yeah, we're getting water back, but we've got to treat it and push it through the pipeline and stuff too. So our ability to help our, our rate payers through those is, is going to be when we do have excess water and the water sharing agreements that we can, you know, manipulate.
Then you do see that someday that we'd be able to help our, our rate payers down the line somewhere.
So do I, can I rephrase that and say, do you ever see us where we're able to sell enough water that we would actually be able to reduce rates? Is that where you're going?
Or just freeze the rates.
Just freeze the rates? We froze the rates for you last year, don't forget.
Right. Something to think about.
So I think where we're going to be, the answer to the question is yes, and it's only a couple of years away. For the last seven years, we've been having a series of rate increases to make sure we always had enough revenue to cover the debt service that was coming on as we invested into the project. This year's rate increase is to offset the inflationary impacts and those kinds of things that we haven't been raising rates for yet because we were doing the other. We're at that point now where we've taken on the end of that debt. We've got one more loan that's going to be taken out this year. And so once we've set our rates structure to accommodate that, then we're good. And then everything else after that is just cost of service.
Thank you, sir.
The answer should be yes and within a couple of years. And I'm not going to predict our rate model, but last year when we decided not to ask for a rate increase, we had three years left in the, in the rate model of recommended increases. So maybe we're at two years now, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We'll see you July.
Thank you.
Can I just say thank you? And if you could relay this to all the line workers, utility workers out there, tell them thanks as well. You know, Texas was recently the hottest place in the world, hotter than the Persian Gulf, Sahara Desert. The modern miracle of utilities, air conditioning, shower, running toilets. No one appreciates it until it's not working. So thank you for all you do and for all the workers out there that are keeping those lights on in our community.
We'll share that with them tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes. We do, we do thank them. Is there anything else you have for us?
Not, not.
Because I'm at my, end of my list.
We're at the end of ours too, so.
Okay. So hold on. Let me, let me check in, Mr. Gleason has his hand up, he's not, okay. I too want to thank, again, all the employees for what they do every day to keep everything running with the city. It's important and I'm so impressed with the great job that people do and the pride that they take in their work in serving our citizens. So thank you all. And thanks to the, the budget team who has made hard decisions before it got to us and we realize that and we thank you. I wish there were money for everything and there's, there's not. So thank y'all for, for taking care of a number of those decisions before we get to the ones that, that we, we struggle with. So we appreciate it. And at this point, anything else from anybody?
Presentation.
Okay. And thank you. The presentation was great.
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to throw in the packet was very thorough, the presentation was great. Thanks to staff also and there's a lot more work to be done, but we're, we're cruising along and thanks for everything you guys all do.
With that, how inflation has affected people's salaries was golden, so thank you. That was, that was very impactful. It was all good. So at this point, Mr. Vino, would anybody sign up for Q and A online?
No.
Is there anyone in chambers or in the lobby that wishes to address the council for questions and answers with present public? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I've got, I'll go ahead and give Mr. Prather the motion and Mr. Gleason the second and Mr. Vino, let's see who wants to go home.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
All right. And we will gabble out at 8:28.